Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the December 4th, 2023 Salina City Commission Meeting to order. I will look at staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, may we have roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards or proclamations or hearings today, so that will move us to consent agenda items.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of November 27th, 2023. Item 5.2, approve resolution number 23-8170, adopting the financial policies for the city of Salina. And item 5.3, approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 30th, 2023.
And I think the original consent agenda showed November 20th, and it was actually November 27th that we have on this one. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Or is there an item anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 with corrections as noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 6.1, consider the request by Ram Contracting and Dirtworks of Salina, Kansas to withdraw its bid and award the bid for project number 23011, 2023 Sidewalk Ramps, to Morgan Brothers Construction, Inc. of La Crosse, Kansas, in the amount of $108,616.30 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $114,047.12 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Morgan Brothers Construction, Inc. of La Crosse, Kansas upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual, part of our annual program to do ramps, sidewalk ramps, ADA accessible ramps. Usually do about 30 to 40 a year. This one includes 32 different locations around the city. We've, seems like we've had a little trouble in the last few years getting bidders for this project, and so this year we added some curbing in a parking lot and some ramps over at the field house and just made it a little more attractive, $100,000 approximate project. And so it does seem like it worked. We definitely got four bidders, which we were pretty excited about. The problem was one of them was quite a bit lower than the rest of them. So we looked at that and met with the contractor and thought this is just, you know, what happened here, not a good situation if that's, you know, we don't typically try to get the lowest and best bid, and we just didn't think that was the best bid. That just seems, something's not quite right here. So we went through kind of our options with legal counsel and the contractor submitted a letter just talking about making the mistake on his bid or basically what Greg calls it, non, between judgment or nonjudgmental mistakes. So there's different statutes for different types of mistakes in bid, bidding processes. So we have in the past, not too long ago even on the Broadway median projects where contractor made a nonjudgmental error where they put a number in that was supposed to be a square yard number and it was a square foot number, and then it messed up their calculations. And so it was a little easier to say, yeah, that one's probably not a legit bid, disqualified, they get their bid bond back. Well, in this case, it's judgmental in nature, so there's, the city commission has more leeway whether or not we want to do that. So that's the, kind of the long answer in this blue sheet. There's a lot of the different options that we have, none of which we thought were very good. We feel like it's a $2,000 mistakes-ish. He is a local contractor. He's worked in the city a long time and has worked for a lot of good contractors around town, has actually now stepped up and got his own license. So we're pretty excited about him having his license. And he has been on other projects, has not been successful until today, which we'll have another project later where he was successful, at a pretty reasonable, good price. But in this case, we feel like he made an error. Got, he's got his letter in there and you don't have to accept it, but that is one of the options is to, basically one of our options is to approve a motion rejecting that bid and then allowing, in the best interest of the project, directing engineering staff to return the bid bond. That is one of the options. And then we would go with the second low bidder, which is Morgan Brothers. Morgan Brothers has done a good job for us recently on a repair project. They're out of La Crosse, Kansas, and have started bidding on quite a bit of other projects as well. So it's been, they're, I believe they're getting, they bid on a side, a Parks project, Parks concrete project, so they're getting more involved in our community. So we're getting really good bids. The Parks projects had nine bidders or close to that. We had about nine bidders on our pathways project, so we're just, we feel like we're getting good bids and getting good competitive things, or competitive things going on the concrete side. But in this case, we would end up going with the second low bidder, and we thought it would be, kind of agreed that we think it's okay to give him his bid bond back, but you know, it's a discretionary call by the commission. So I will stand for questions.
Okay. How far into the process do, does the city go before work is done for which the bid bond, the security bond would be considered fair compensation for work? I mean, this bid has not been formally accepted, so it wasn't as if it had been signed. Is there a point of no return?
It's a good question, because yeah, our instructions to bidders, Greg helped us with this blue sheet, our council did, and instructions to bidders is on page two, line eight there. So, let's see, actually, that's not exactly what I was hoping it would say. It's, okay, yeah, there's a, there's a part where, once you award the project, they have so many days to fulfill the obligations of that, of that, of that contract, which is getting their performance bond and getting their power of attorney and all the things that have to happen for them to do the project. Well, that's when you're into more staff time and having to go back, you know, if you have to end up going with somebody else, then there's, there's time into it. So you're right, that's a good point. We haven't, this is really just rejecting one, going with another. It's no different than awarding one or not awarding one. It's, we haven't lost a lot of time yet, but if the process were to move forward and we tried to get their contract signed and then they don't get bonds and they can't do it for that, or they decide they're gonna high tail it out of here or something, then yeah, then that's when it's, the bid bond would be security for that.
Okay.
Greg, you want to add something to that?
Well, if it would be helpful, I just wanted to mention, when we talk about these sorts of projects, there's really three types of bonds that one has to think through. The bid bond is just that. It is intended, normally if someone simply walks away or steps away from a bid and says, well, I, I don't want to do it now. That is the offer to do the work, and you're letting the project or awarding the bid is the rest of the story in terms of the contractual relationship, and that's when a contract is entered into. That bid bond, ordinarily if somebody walks away from that bid, the legal remedy is what's called cover, the, the difference between the bid and what you have to move to to get the work done, the second bid or whatever it might be. The bid bond is of the nature of a liquidated damage, where instead of having to pursue recovery of that cover, you indicate that you would instead have the benefit of the bond as that measure of damage. We allow that to be either in the form of a bid bond or a cashier's check, and in this case, it was a cashier's check. The thought behind the recommendation is that when it is a judgmental error that leads to the bid, the request to withdraw it, the law on the matter is, if it's a judgmental mistake, as soon as it's, that bid is opened, that bid cannot be just withdrawn at the discretion of the, of the bidder. So it would seem, now this is more a matter of staffing and commission discretion, but the recommendation is, is intended to avoid any precedent or practice of where we all simply say, well, no harm, no foul, you can withdraw your bid and here's your bid bond. To avoid that and to deal with the circumstances, your, the city's instructions to bidders makes clear that you all have the discretion of rejecting the bid if you, when looking at the bid, think it is, on one basis, that you can legitimately do that, is if you think that the contractor has just put him or herself in a position where it's just not economically feasible to do the work and any risks associated with that arrangement. So by rejecting, the recommendation is that you all, rather than just accepting and withdrawing the bid, that you all look at it, and if it is in your evaluation, not a favorable arrangement for getting the work done, you have the basis of saying, we want to reject that bid, and if the decision is to reject, then it does seem appropriate to return the bid bond, because you're answering the question as to whether the bid should be considered or not, not the contractor making the bid, if that makes sense.
That, I went to sleep last night and that, that was the one little thing that I couldn't figure out, but that, that answered my question.
Commissioner Ryan.
Do we have any experience with Ram Contracting? Have they bid other things successfully at Salina?
Yeah.
We haven't had this kind of experience with them before, have we?
No, they haven't had successful, a successful bid on a city project thus far. He's mostly worked for Smokey Hill Construction, who works for us a lot, worked for Carlson Concrete for a lot of years, Brad Lancaster Construction as well. So we all know him pretty well, done a lot of concrete work in Salina, been doing it since 1999, so pretty reputable. But he, just this year, actually got his general contractor's license. So in June of this year, got a general contractor's license. So he's building, now bidding on smaller city projects to try to build some rapport and do some, you know, do some more city projects at this point. But yeah, mostly he's just done driveways, flat work for private entities around town and different, with different companies, so.
We often hear about the city being so difficult to work with, and I think that we could commend city staff for stepping in and seeing this doesn't look right. And I do appreciate Mr. Caldwell's letter of explanation, and I believe he is sincere, and look forward to working with him in the future.
Yes, thank you. We, we really are happy with a few more bidders now. We've, there's been times we've had one, maybe two on some of our projects. So it's really nice to have bidders that are interested in working for us, and we'd like to keep that relationship good. Feel like this is a-
And as I looked over the other bids, this is keeping the money here at home.
Right.
Commissioner Leckwood.
I agree with Commissioner Longbine's statement, and hopefully we can do business with Ram Contracting again, and just a minor speed bump, hopefully.
Learning experience.
Yeah, we, we all make mistakes and stuff, but I guess we use, we're using two terms, judgmental, error, and then in his letter, he uses logistical notes were incorrect. So I, I guess, what part of his bid was actually off? Did he, did he misread the prints? Was there part of the job that he didn't have in his bid? And, and I guess it doesn't matter. It would be nice to know, though, what, what caused his bid to be about a half of what it should have been, I guess, would be my question.
We typically have bid sidewalk ramps as each, so type A sidewalk ramp, type B sidewalk ramp, or type one, two, and three, whatever type we bid them as, so it's each. So that was an interesting twist for some of our bidders. You're, we actually bid it in square feet. So some of them are just longer, they're harder to deal with. We felt like that was only, only fair to do it, instead of just making them bid 20 of them at the same price. Well, some of them are gonna be harder, so we had the square foot number in there, and so we thought maybe that was something that was unique for him, but we really, that's the only thing we thought could be an issue, but really, he, he hasn't bid on this before, so it's, this was his first time. He can do sidewalk for the square footage price that he bid. It's, it's interesting, because it's like, yeah, that's a good, that's a good price, but for sidewalk ramps, they're small, they're all over the place. You can't do it for that, for the ramps, because you have to put the truncated domes in them, and you have different things you're forming. So it's almost like, oh, yeah, I can do sidewalk for that price. Well, no, in this case, this is, you're not doing long runs of sidewalk for that price. You're doing small areas and you, takes twice as long, should have been twice as much. That's about what it should have been.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Just to-
I guess that was my question.
Our analyzation of that as well, that's what we saw, anyway, in the bids.
And, and that was, you had a conversation with him about this and all, so, okay.
And he is here today if you want to, ask any more questions, but that's kind of, yeah, we've talked with him quite a bit about this.
I figured it had to be, yeah, a calculation or a portion of the bid that was missed or something to be off that much, so. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public if there's any comments or questions.
Norin Malasalina, are any of you old enough to remember the issues they had building an interstate? This smells like the same deal. It's starting to smell. People went to jail over that bid and contract when we built the interstates back there in the 60s. Y'all ain't old enough to remember that, are you? Put this one hold. Look at this a little more.
Commissioners, they assure you no one's going to jail?
Why do we take that? Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
We approve a motion rejecting the low bid of Ram Contracting and Dirtworks on the basis that it is not the best interest of the project and directing engineering staff to return its bid security.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve rejecting the low bid of Ram Contracting and Dirtworks on the basis that it is not in the best interest of the project and directing engineering staff to return its bid security. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
That passes 4-1. That will bring us to the second part of this blue sheet. Do I have a motion to approve the second low bid?
Yeah, move to approve the, awarding the bid for project number 23011, 2023 Sidewalk Ramps to Morgan Brothers Construction of La Crosse, Kansas, in the amount of $108,616.30 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $114,047.12 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Morgan Brothers Construction of La Crosse, Kansas upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second, awarding the bid for project number 23011, 2023 Sidewalk Ramps to Morgan Brothers Construction, Inc. of La Crosse, Kansas, in the amount of $108,616.30 with a $5,430.82 contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $114,047.12 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Morgan Brothers Construction, Inc. of La Crosse, Kansas upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve resolution number 23-8175, along with awarding the bid for project number 23037, 2023 New Sidewalk Construction to Ram Contracting and Dirtworks of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $124,479 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $130,702.95 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Ram upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual sidewalk project, and we're in partnership with the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas Pathways Grant. We're able to, let's say, do a little more, but really the bids came in so well that we're kind of right on where we thought we'd be as far as we're doing, able to construct about 1,800 feet of sidewalk in the area around the Salina area, United, United Emergency Aid Food Bank. So yeah, I was thanking Jacob for pulling up the map. So yeah, we're hoping to connect Broadway on the north end there, along Walnut. Right up in here is Broadway and Walnut. There's a bus stop right in this area. Over here to St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, there's a worn path along this road, so we know it gets used often. There's lots of pedestrian traffic to the food bank and just in that area. Not many sidewalks around anywhere, so it's, it's, it's be kind of the first one in, in the neighborhood. It's along Spruce here, which is just the north side of Ace Hardware. This is the future site of Salina Grace as well, so we feel like it's just gonna be a pedestrian area. And then lastly, going on Clark down to South Street, which kind of connects the neighborhood in that area to, to the, to over to Broadway. And we have a good sidewalk along South Street here, too, that connects in, on the north side of South Street. Another bus stop over in this area as well. So in conjunction with the Pathways Grant, the Welsley County chose this, kind of this area to, to use some of the mon, the funds, the money for the grant for this, for this sidewalk project. And so, yes, we bid the project November 14th. Got 10 bidders, is that right? Nine or 10? I'm just gonna put on two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine bidders. This was the nine bidders, engineers estimate with 10, so that was, that's the most bids we've had on a sidewalk project in a while. And as you can see from the bids, we had a couple that were really close. Ram Contracting, which we've talked about earlier, being the low bid, very closely though by, is that about $1,200, $1,200, so very close. Multi-Con has worked in the city quite a bit as well, most recently. They were close, and then kind of all, all down through there, running the whole, running the gamut all the way up to $200,000. So felt like we got good bids. We feel like it's a, it's a reasonable cost. A lot of people thought they could do it for that cost, so we feel like this is a good try, or good chance, good time to maybe try Ram Contracting. So yes, we have not worked with Ram a whole lot before, other than as a concrete person on other projects for, you know, general contractor. He's worked, like I said, with Smokey Hill, Lancaster, and Carlson Concrete since 1999. So for quite a while, he's been a registered craftsman here, 2016 to 19. Rent a Man, is, Ram stands for Rent a Man. So for a while, his company did a lot of work on rentals, so everything on rentals, or and, and concrete work as well. And then just like I said, recently, in the last discussion, just got his general contractor B license this summer, and has started bidding on city work. A lot of our inspection staff knows him. He's worked, he actually worked for the city as well for a few years in the, between 2006-ish timeframe. So city people know him. He's done work that we've inspected and has been quality work. So we feel like it's a good, good bid. So we recommend going with Ram Construction. The other part of this blue sheet is for approving the resolution. Last resolution had, had a estimated amount in there, and the, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Pathways has up to $100,000 that we could get out of it. So with the bids being just a little bit higher than what we thought before, we were able to, feel like we revised the resolution, asked for $100,000, and then we would cover the rest, and it'd still be about, what'd I say, 20, 24% or 25%, like we said before. So that's the other action here that I'm asking you to take. Stand for questions.
Okay, I'll look to my right. Any questions or comments?
On this project and the previous one, what is the completion timeline?
Next summer, July 30, July of 2024.
Okay, because that was in my head, going into winter like this.
Right. We've kind of, you know, a lot of work. As, we're doing a lot of work. We're happy to do a lot of work, but it's, it's a process. And there was a time we feel like we kind of were staggering concrete projects, so we weren't getting a lot of bidders, but we are getting more bidders now, so we feel like maybe we can get, get them out a little quicker next year. It is an, it is an option, but we, typically the sidewalk projects have been kind of at the end of the year and they just get done next spring. And, and actually sometimes even in the winter when they can start and can do work, but end of the day, it'll be done next summer.
On that topic, when is Ohio Magnolia gonna be complete?
Open today.
Today.
Isn't that great news? Today.
Great.
I just talked to Anthony and I talked to our traffic signal guy in the left turn lane. It's our working again, so hey, that's timely question.
That is good news.
Commissioner Longbine, can report that out.
Okay, questions to my left?
I have none.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public?
So if I could ask Dan to elaborate just a little bit. So the same scrutiny we applied on the other bid and concluded that it, it wasn't representative of-
Right.
-of the work has been applied here, and we concluded that this bid is valid or accurate and also is the low bid. Having said that, as an alternative, the, the second alternative that you have there for your consideration is you could approve, you could approve it with any bidder if you so choose with justification, but if for some reason you had concern about Ram's bid overlapping the other item that you just considered, the, the second option is an alternate contractor, the second low bidder. But that would be based on some known reason and that we feel like the low bid's not, either not qualified or not lowest and best.
Well, once again, I'm happy that we're keeping the money here at home.
Yeah, it sounds like the, the gentleman has done work in our community and, and we're familiar with him, so when it came to the other bid, there's sometimes a difference between doing the work and bidding the work, and that's part of the learning process perhaps, so hopefully we'll, everything will be fine, so. Okay, there's no comments from the public. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 23-8175 and a motion awarding the bid for the 2023 New Sidewalk Construction to Ram Contracting and Dirtworks of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $124,479 with a $6,223.95 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $130,702.95 and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. Okay, I'm gonna shorten this up a little bit. We have a motion and a second approving resolution number 23-8175, along with a motion awarding the bid for the 2023 Sidewalk Construction to Ram Contracting and Dirtworks of Salina, Kansas, for an amount not to exceed $130,702.95 and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Aye? Opposed? That item passes five, zero. Okay, that will lead us to item six point three.
Item six point three, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the twenty twenty-three amended budget, which sets December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three as the date for public hearing on the twenty twenty-three amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the twenty twenty-three amended budget.
Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Statute authorizes municipalities to amend their budget that they had set. If your expenditures go, are going to go over what you actually budgeted in that prior year, irregardless of whether your revenue's coming or not, we're just looking at, budgets are only for expenditures and so anytime we expect expenditures in a particular budget to go over budget, we do have the authority to amend that budget. As part of that requirement, the city is required to have a formal public hearing and I'm required to come and ask you to, for the permission to set that hearing date and we are required to have a publication, a notice of publication for ten days prior to that date. Throughout the year, staff reviews financials to watch for budget, you know, activity to make sure that things aren't going over budget. And in addition to those monthly kind of financial reviews, finance staff reviews all budgeted funds at, at the end of the year to make sure that we're not going to have any budget violations. Upon this review, we discovered that we felt like the general fund, arts and humanities fund, tourism fund, special alcohol fund, solid waste fund and golf fund would require amended budgets. The general fund, while it's not over budget today or as of November twenty-fifth, we do anticipate that that budget, that will go over budget. We feel like the, the leading contributor or one of the leading contributors of that is overtime expenses in public safety. I will note that when we budget salaries, it's, it's a very, very difficult thing to do. You're, you're trying to estimate as low as you can as not to over budget, but then trying to figure out how many vacancies you'll have and those vacancies may cause overtime and there's just a lot of things that go into that budget process. So, we feel like we probably didn't budget it where we thought it was because we thought that with the pay plan that we'd be fully staffed in a lot of these areas and it just, they just haven't gotten there yet. So, we do feel like the, the overtime is, in the public sectors is probably one of the leading causes in the general fund and we feel like by the end of the year, we'll probably be about six hundred thousand dollars over budget. While we do, on the flip side, expect that revenues are going to become in over budget by about four million dollars, so we do expect that there, we won't be in a negative net income situation, we'll still be in a positive net income situation in the general fund. So, staff is recommending a budget amendment of six hundred thousand dollars to the total of forty-six thousand, or forty-six million, eight hundred and four thousand, sixty-eight dollars. And the arts and humanities fund, the same kind of situation in the salaries and overtime and any associated expenditures. When we're doing the budget, we kind of have to estimate vacancies and things like that. We may, we may have under budgeted that little bit. They do have a little bit more overtime than anticipated. This, we expect this budget to come in approximately forty-two thousand dollars over budget, so we're recommending a forty-five thousand dollar, we like to cover ourselves, a forty-five thousand dollar increase to a total of one million, seventy-two thousand, ninety, nine hundred and seven dollars. That fund still will be in a positive net income, so, and, or, or at least the fund balance will be covered. The, the next two funds are pass-through funds, which are effectively funds that we collect funding in and all of those monies go back out to a different entity or for a different purpose, which are the tourism fund, which is the collection of transient guest tax, of which a portion of that goes to Salina Chamber of Commerce and a portion that go, portion of that goes to support Tony's Pizza Event Center and also for our baseball, our sports facility improvements. The original budget for this was two million, fifty thousand, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Our actual collections totaled two million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two, or about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars over budget. So, we're recommending a budget increase in that, this particular fund of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Special alcohol fund, in that fund, we've collected everything to date, so we know exactly where it's going to end up. In the special alcohol fund, we've only collected three of the four quarters and so we're estimating that approximately seventy thousand dollars will come through and, and will put us under budget about thirty-four thousand dollars. So, we're recommending, not knowing what that number's going to be, an increase of about, of fifty thousand dollars to cover the, the additional revenue. The solid waste fund, if you recall back in March of twenty twenty-three, city commission approved the purchase of a new compactor that was replacing a compactor that had, was destroyed by fire in November of twenty twenty-two. So, this could never have been expected for twenty twenty-three since we adopted this budget in August. The cost of that compactor after insurance was a little over seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Year-end projections for the solid waste fund show that there'll be approximately six hundred and seventy thousand dollars over budget, so staff is recommending an increase in their expenditure budget of seven hundred thousand dollars to cover that unexpected cost. The golf course fund originally was budgeted eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. During twenty twenty-three, this fund experienced some unexpected repairs on the irrigation system and wells, a total of over twenty-eight thousand dollars. They also have, had a lot of repair cost on carts and mowers because of the age of those pieces of equipment. They had higher than normal pro-shop orders and higher than normal driving range expenses. Even though some of those are recaptured and recouped in the revenue side, we still have to amend the budget on the expenditure side if we're going to expend that. And they thought a lot of this was because we had a longer season, we've had a lot of driver other. Overall, staff expense expects the golf course fund to be about ninety thousand dollars over budget, so we're recommending a ninety thousand dollar increase to the golf fund. In the fiscal note, I just kind of summarized that, I won't repeat that. After we do our publication, once we set our publication, we have to set these numbers, so once we set that and publish this at the end of this week, giving us our ten-day notice for a December eighteenth public hearing, those amounts cannot be increased, but if necessary, we could reduce them if we, if we wanted to, but we, we wouldn't, we just leave them as they are. So, our recommended action is for you to make a motion to authorize the publication of the notice of budget hearing, which sets December eighteenth as the date for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the twenty twenty-three amended budget. I would stand for any questions.
Any questions?
I don't really have a question about the budget, but it seems like the irrigation system is fairly new. If this, if this going to be the new normal or are you going to expect these kinds of problems in the future budgeting periods? Or did something extraordinarily happen or was it an old piece of the mechanism, a well or something like that?
Deputy Director Brad Lamer. This instance, we had water get into something that shouldn't have gotten into and it fried, I call it a motherboard, that basically operates part of the system. It was not supposed to happen, it's been rectified, but it was a costly error, so that was the, the big one. So, it shouldn't be that it's an ongoing thing, but the, the new system is a little bit different. It's very big and there's a lot of moving parts and so we're trying to fill it out, but no, this shouldn't be an ongoing thing. This was kind of a, one big hit and then hopefully it gets corrected after this.
Was, was that an error on our part or on the installation that should fall back on the company that installed it?
It was an installation error, but there was some back and forth as to who, are we past warning now? It's been in, it's been in there for, you know, a year or two, two years, three years and so we had to eat that cost. The manufacturer, the installer would not, would not fix it. There was also two entities that had their hands in it, the installer and then also there is an electrical aspect that was handled by somebody else and so there was kind of a, it wasn't us, it wasn't us, so we ended up eating that cost.
Without, go ahead, Nick.
Thank you.
The repairs to carts, golf carts, didn't I see a memo that we were replacing the golf carts?
Possibly for next year, which is what we're hoping. They're nine years old right now and it's showing very, very much, so future, we're trying to replace them this upcoming year, but as of right now, we're dealing with the nine-year-old carts.
Okay. No questions. Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Let's see, the transient guest tax and special alcohol tax are up, so our people's business must be drinking more, I guess. I don't know what that is, but, okay, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the two thousand twenty-three amended budget, which sets December eighteen, two thousand twenty-three as the date for public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the two thousand twenty-three amended budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second authorizing publication of the notice of budget hearing for the twenty twenty-three amended budget, which sets December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three as the date for public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the two thousand twenty-three amended budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That item passes five, zero. Thank you. That will lead us to item six point four.
Item six point four, consider the Salina Airport Authority's request and Salina Community Economic Development Organization Board of Directors' recommendation regarding the City of Salina's participation in the funding of a proposed agreement with SkyWest Airlines for resumption of overnight flight scheduling of Denver flights.
Mr. Scrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you, I'm sure, recall last week, we took up the, the question of supporting SkyWest's award of emergency air service designation by the U.S. Department of Transportation for the, an upcoming three-year period and the action that you took last week was authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support to be sent to, to the Department of Transportation indicating our recommendation and preference that, that SkyWest received that, that EAS award. The item that's before you today is, is a related item in that the service that, that SkyWest proposed was a flight schedule, midday flights and a particular number of flights and we can, we'll get into this in greater detail in a little bit. And Tim Rogers with the Airport Authority has been in close communication with SkyWest and he utilizes the services of the Arc Star Group and Gary Foss, who's on, on the line and, and can provide some additional information as well. To, one of the points of conversation that they've had with SkyWest is it's viewed more favorably by both the business traveling public as well as leisure travelers to have a flight schedule that leaves earlier in the morning and arrives later in the day in the evening. It facilitates getting out of Salina and making connections and facilitates making connections and returning to Salina and, and potentially avoids overnight stays, either off-site in a, in another location while you're trying to make that connecting flight to get back to, to Salina. And so, the conversation that they had was the possibility of, and, and the Airport Authority has proposed a nine hundred thousand dollar incentive to SkyWest to incentivize them to provide overnight flights. The breakout of that is proposed to be four hundred thousand dollars from the City of Salina, four hundred thousand from Celine County and a hundred thousand from the Airport Authority. You may recall that, that distribution, that's been a proposed distribution previously as relates to the possibility of having a, a repair and overhaul facility and, and putting that towards equipment and trying to incentivize SkyWest in that regard. And Mr. Rogers and, and Mr. Foss can speak to kind of what's transpired since that time in the way of pilot shortages and other things that, that caused that approach not to be finalized, that funding not to be utilized and, and so the conversations moved to kind of the, the overnight flights. So, that request was taken to the, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization as a recommending body to you to consider the request. They initially heard it and then they had a special meeting of the EDO yesterday, or last week and reviewed the presentation that Mr. Foss made and that was attached in your packet. They deliberated and ultimately recommended to you that, that incentive request be, be approved and be granted. What I'd like to do is give Mr. Rogers and Mr. Foss an opportunity to kind of walk you through this. The attached to my staff report is a memo from Mr. Rogers dated November twenty-ninth as well as a, a PowerPoint presentation or a slide deck from Arc Star. I like to give Mr. Rogers and Mr. Foss the opportunity to review both of those with you and then I do have some additional information that, that I shared at your, your place and we can go through and I do expect kind of a, a possible back and forth conversation based on all that information. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Rogers, Executive Director for the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mike, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. The Airport Authority's been working on goals and objectives for scheduled air service for Salina, Celine County, really all north central Kansas. We, we serve a twenty twenty-five county area for air service and it's similar to our retail trade region. We are a hub for transportation, finance, healthcare, retail. We, one of the first goals was to maintain fifty-seat regional jet service, maintain Denver-Chicago flights, end, end the Salina and Hays tag. Through the process of this most recent essential air service contract selection process, we were, I think, successful on those items in that the new SkyWest Airlines contract that'll be effective January first accomplished those, those goals, maintains fifty-seat regional jet service, maintains Denver and Chicago flights and those ends the tag at Hays, those become non-stop flights. We maintain also the United Airlines code share and that brand and the community, the ease of ticketing to domestic locations beyond Denver and Chicago and international connections that are needed by our travelers to and from the community. We want to continue those now, those connections. We want to see a increase in passenger placements that have been stunted and where, where we fell back. We'd like to recover, see the community recover to pre-pandemic levels and there's, these are many times situations that the community just has no control over, a pandemic, a pilot shortage, so that have impacted our service and in the use, utility of the service. Big on the list is to return to the Denver overnight flight. The Denver overnight flight, as Gary will highlight here in a moment, is really a precursor of a goal that we have and that is a third flight to, to Houston. The overnight flight is a key item in that progression also and hopefully we would come back with not a request, but a report that the Denver, the Houston flight, it would be possible, but this is a key step. It is important to keep in mind, we are competing with other communities that are competing for still a scarce resource that all, all airlines have. There is some improvement in the pilot shortage. That means that we can even begin to have discussion with SkyWest as far as an additional crew for an overnight flight. It is not as simple as taking the existing Denver flight that's a midday flight and to schedule it for overnight. The overnight requires at minimum two and a half additional crew sets, captain, first officer, flight attendant. It requires the expense of an overnight. It actually requires the expense of activating another jet to put into the fleet and to the SkyWest schedule for the essential air service communities that they fly. This total startup cost approaches three million dollars that has been confirmed by, by SkyWest. That set, crew set and that jet, there's competition for that. There is a community in Idaho that's looking for a very similar overnight flight and they are willing to provide up to four million dollars to, for the, to provide that incentive. We have a relationship with SkyWest that we are in a position of really, okay, Salina, you kind of have first crack for some of this scarce resource. It's the long-term working relationship. It's the value that United Airlines sees in this market that's working on our behalf also. The nine hundred thousand would be a, in, a portion of those startup costs would help to defer those startup costs to see this, this improvement happen and make that next step. Now, we know how many passengers that will bring back to, to through Salina on those flights, roughly eight thousand passengers outbound and inbound. The challenge has been, okay, how do we measure that? How do we quantify the economic benefit for that in a manner that is meaningful, that is reliable? Because there's not a model that we can use such as the issue of industrial revenue bonds, there is not a model we can use to, to develop a benefit-cost analysis, but that's what we've been working on even up through today and, and honestly, till about three P.M., still working on this to bring this information to you. You'll have another slide deck to look at that Gary will work you through. We've been looking to We've been looking to measure the benefit to the community for the investment of economic development incentive dollars. We believe that's best done by estimating the increase in retail sales tax, transit guest tax. Already, we know that SkyWest will have to house crews, and a crew, when they come in, they stay overnight. It's a captain, it's a first officer, it's a flight attendant, it's three rooms, seven days a week, you know, fifty-two weeks out of the year. So, we know that, and we know that there'll be an increase in passengers coming to Salina, staying overnight before they leave the next morning. That's normal in the travel industry, what occurs. We know that individuals will fly in, be ready for a meeting the next day. At our local businesses, they will stay overnight before they start a meeting at eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning the next day. We do know that. So, how to best define those economic benefits and the methodology to do so? Think today, we'll present the latest as far as methodology. We'd like to have the discussion with you to see if you agree with that methodology and the results of that, and see where we are at. Last comment, then I'll turn to Gary, let him walk through the methodology and the pros and cons and the outcomes for this. I would like to say, this is a true but for. SkyWest Airlines will not proceed with this without that incentive. Lying out there are incentives and offers from other communities that far exceed nine-hundred-thousand dollars. And again, the allocation would be shared, as we did previously, City, County, Airport Authority. We are in the midst of brokering this, and so, as we visit locally here with our economic development partners, as we work with SkyWest Airlines, we do get new information. And since the Economic Development Organization Board meeting, SkyWest has indicated that they can do seven nights per week. We thought for a while they could only put the resources together, do five nights per week, but right now, the indication, at the full incentive, they can do seven nights per week. I'll stop there, and Mike, anything preliminary to add before we ask?
My only thought is you, and not to confuse it further, but one of the points you made in your memo was the EAS supported a certain number of flights a week, and then SkyWest had added to that.
Thanks for mentioning that. That's in the memo, but it's good worth mentioning. The essential air service contract is for twelve flights per week. SkyWest adds two additional flights per week for seven flights, for fourteen flights per week, seven to Denver, seven to Chicago, fourteen instead of twelve. Based upon their proposal just received and will be approved, their contract to be approved, that's at a value of five-hundred-eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars per year. That SkyWest is putting their, you know, that's on their dime to add the two additional flights per week. So, it's a full seven, seven flights per day, Chicago and Denver, for a total of fourteen. With that, I'd like to introduce Gary Foss. Gary is the Airport Authority's air service consultant, but I also like to introduce Gary as the community's air service consultant. He's really working on behalf of the community. Gary's experience in the air carrier business is unparalleled for over twenty years. He was, managed the American Airlines, American Eagle Regional Airline System, and then for American Airlines, he operated an airline down in the Caribbean. Many of the communities that make pitches over the years, you know, were in Gary's office presenting information that was off-target, and Gary is, knows how, what the airlines are needing to see, and the analysis that goes into that process of selecting communities, deciding on to upgrade service, and to work on behalf of the community along those lines. Gary, I'll turn over to you, let you walk through this updated slide deck. This slide deck is at your, at your, at your seat and in front of you, so you can follow along.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me here this afternoon. Thank you, Tim, for those kind words. I can say categorically that based on my thirty-four years, actually at American, twenty overseeing the commercial aspects of American Eagle, and two years overseeing the mainline schedule, that good air service is like the plumbing to the house. It's the infrastructure that a community needs to really generate development and bring in recruiting companies and other things. And we would see those communities that would support the air service prosper, and we'd end up adding price to them. And conversely, we would see a lot of communities fall by the wayside. We canceled probably three hundred communities, air service, over that fifteen-to-twenty-year time horizon, added four hundred. We talked about the four hundred, didn't talk too much about the three hundred. But in some regions of the world, these overnight flights, it's of so much value to leave at seven A.M. instead of eleven A.M., that we would put them out to the highest bidder. And we would then add our revenue projections for that particular flight or for that particular route to what the communities were bidding. And so, it really is a bidding war out there. Now, we, as Mike actually covered here, the, what is it about these overnight flights? They provide more flight connections to the largest connecting banks. So, the biggest bank at Denver is the first one out and the last one back. And so, you're going to see how many more connections, how many more cities you can fly into and out of Salina. It allows for, as most of you, if not all of you, know, earlier meetings, you know, which translates into fewer nights away from the family. If you're leaving midday at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock, you get in that night, you get situated, and you go back, you know, and you have your meetings the next day. You don't have to. You can actually start that meeting that day. Day trippers to Denver, of course, it supports that, where we don't have that today. And it benefits leisure travelers as well. Of course, any, anyone on vacation, it's paying for the first day of the hotel, they're paying for the last day of the hotel. If they're going to Orlando, to the Magic Kingdom, with a morning departure, they can get in, in time to see the six P.M. parade. And so, it actually allows them to, to get some value out of that first and first and the last day. So, you can see why it's popular. The incentive is required, as Tim is saying, and there are quite a number of competitive pressures out there, not just the one community there in Idaho. So, we recently convinced, convinced SkyWest to return the non-stop fifty-seat RJ service. This is only the third EAS city that they have agreed to do that. Twelve cities have gone by the wayside here, where SkyWest is not bidding. They're just, they're, they elected not to bid, as they were desiring to stand up this thirty-seat airline to operate charter service to include to Salina. As you heard Tim just say, the EAS program provides for this minimum of twelve round trips. Because of the business traffic that is valued by United, big United, in Chicago as well as them, they want to flush out a full pattern, seven days a week, and so, they're going to operate these other four flights, you know, the last two days of the week on their dime, and that's an investment of a little over five hundred thousand. You can see that figure there in the middle of the page, five twelve, essentially. This is largely owing to the work that Tim has undertaken over the years with SkyWest in terms of supporting them with media, with sales efforts, and with other things. So, Salina truly stands out amongst the essential air service markets, and it's why you have this opportunity, very frankly, and other communities don't. So, just to underscore, to illustrate the popularity of the early morning departures, what you see here is two cities that SkyWest recently changed from an eleven o'clock departure to a seven A.M. departure. So, they put in overnight flights into Casper, Wyoming, just in September, so this has only been out there for two months now, and Elko, Nevada. And you can see the impact is immediate. Now, we were on the opposite side of this. We had an overnight flight, and we lost it to pilot shortages and other things back in two thousand twenty-one, and we saw our traffic disappear, but, but the opportunity, of course, is to replicate something like what we're seeing right here. And you can see that the popularity of these flights, it's immediate. It's just right out of the box again. They started Elko in mid-September, and we're sitting here at early part of December looking at this. So, so it's truly an illustration. As you heard Tim say, we represent a number of communities across the country, and what you're looking at is an email that was sent from United Airlines to me. You can see the United gentleman right here. This is, this is me, and this is all public information under sunshine laws. So, this happens to be Lewiston, Idaho, and you can, you can see right here, reviewed with leadership, given the opportunity cost across the network. What he's talking about is the bids, the bidding process, you know, for these things, and the lobbyist and the jockey for, for a better schedule with a morning departure and an evening return or an overnight flight. You can see, given the current outlook on regional capabilities, we need to get to four million to move the route to an overnight flight on a CRJ. So, it's just coincidental that I happen to be in this negotiating process with United for exactly the same thing. SkyWest is requesting quite a bit less, as you can see, for the same plane. Lewiston, Idaho is just slightly bigger than Salina, you know, so shares many demographics, and this is more representative again. This is not a one-off. This is the way that the industry operates. Salina is deemed, on the left-hand side, by United. They have one of the strongest bases of corporate traffic among all the essential air service routes. You can see a quote here from a gentleman by the name of Steve Ross, Managing Director of Sales Central U.S. and Canada. This was back when SkyWest didn't have the pilots to operate and had to implement tag flights, and the process to do that with the federal government under the essential air service program was to file to terminate service. So, there were twenty-nine communities, of which Salina was one of the twenty-nine. Hays was also in that, Dodd City as well, Liberal, all were part of this group, and you can see his quote is, "They are by far the most supportive," he's talking about Tim, "of any of the twenty-nine communities involved, and have the best base of corporate travelers." So, this is a compelling reason why United might be, find it attractive to have an overnight flight. Of course, it's hard to get United, the big United's attention, you know, United, American or Delta. We only have three network carriers when you're on the regional side of the business, but there's a, there's a lot of traffic that could be there. Now, this traffic's still there, but it's driving to Wichita. And you see that on the right side of the page, and what you see is the percentage or the makeup of business travel to leisure travel when we had the overnight flight, and what happened when we lost the overnight flight. So, it fell from fifty-four percent of the planes had business travel on it, business travelers, and that fell to just thirty-five percent when we started departing at eleven o'clock. The business doesn't slow down there, they just drive to Wichita, you know, which about fifty-nine percent, sixty percent of all of your traffic, where you're the closest airport, is driving to Wichita. So, this exacerbated that effect. Now, the actual passengers lost as we went from Iran to a midday turn is about seven thousand. So, and why is that? Because as we, we went to this, as we went to a midday flight, you don't connect to everything at the hub. And we ended up losing connections to the biggest cities of the West. When I say losing connections, that means that they're no longer published, they're no longer available for sale. And we're not talking Kalamazoo, Michigan, and Erie, Pennsylvania, we're talking Los Angeles. You cannot go both directions over Denver from Salina to Los Angeles, or to San Francisco, or to Seattle, or to San Diego. I'll show you the list of the cities. And so, the traffic, of course, rather than depart midday or not even have, having access to a public schedule, it just shows no schedule exists on the way back to Salina, except over Chicago. That ends up driving the traffic to Wichita. Here, you see the, the actual city pairs that we're talking about. So, all of the dots, these are your major cities west of the Mississippi, effectively that we can only connect in one direction over Denver, given the current schedule change, and we'll connect in both directions to Los Angeles, Phoenix, Seattle, San Diego, San Francisco, you know, so on. And so, right now, if somebody goes out to Los Angeles, they can go over Denver, but they got to fly back on a red-eye flight to Chicago, sit in Chicago for six hours to catch a connection back to, back to Salina. So, you can see, that kind of takes us off the, takes us off the grid in terms of the, you know, easy access to the global air network, you know, which is so important. Now, the projected impact of this reinstating these connections, so, so if we depart at seven o'clock in the morning or six-thirty in the morning and come back from Denver at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night to arrive, to arrive Salina, or seven o'clock, depart Denver to arrive Salina at, let's say, ten o'clock, ten P.M., we're going to recapture this traffic that we lost and then some. So, we're projecting eight thousand, roughly eight thousand, as you heard Mike, Mike Scragg and Tim say, roughly eight thousand passengers will be recaptured that we had previously lost. Remember that thirty-five, that fifty-four go into thirty-five? The blue here are business travelers. The gray bar here is leisure travelers. So, you can see the relative split. Now, on top of that, as you heard, we have twenty-seven-hundred-room nights. The passengers themselves are going to drive a lot of hotel bookings, of course, and there's twenty-seven-hundred-room nights annually that the crew alone, or four hundred thousand dollars in spend that the crew alone for SkyWest will generate with an overnight flight. That's, without an overnight flight, of course, at zero today. So, we're trying to assess the impact. The big story here, the big, the big benefit to, to the community is commerce, of course. Again, you're, you're either on the railroad track or you're not, and if you're not easy to get to, you know, it's difficult to, to conduct commerce, to do business, frankly. And so, we looked at the range of annual visitor spend, and there were two studies that we could find. One, the state of Idaho did fairly recently. The other one was the state of Kansas did back in two thousand twenty-sixteen. And the, the, as economists put these economic impacts together, of course, they don't look at just the direct spend, but they also look at the indirect spend, indirect and induced. And an example of indirect, indirect hotel spend, let's say, would be if somebody is now flying because of this overnight flight into Salina, and somebody else is driving to meet that individual, and that second person that is driving stays in a hotel, that's the indirect impact of this. So, so both of these studies are, the, the study contemplates is Kansas is a little larger, a little more, little less conservative than is Idaho in their projections, as you can see. The demographics of Idaho and Kansas are fairly similar, if you will. So, we wanted to present to you just the range. There isn't an exact dollar amount here. You can't get economists to agree on, you know, much of anything, and you see that right here, but even at the lower end, you're talking ten million dollars in added commerce. State of Kansas would say twenty-six million dollars. Now, that twenty-six million dollars is projected to impact lots of different sectors of your economy, of course, and so, the biggest one, food and beverage. And we're, we didn't contemplate that. Here, we focused a lot on the overnight impact on, on your hotel, you know, the hotel business, and we'll see that right here. But we do have, we do have the others laid out, retail, travel, food and beverage, and recreation. So, this is the twenty-six million dollars for, for your region, as the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce did provide some figures for each category, which we used to then... provide some figures for each category, which we use to then, with implements, to calculate the total value. And you see here, the annual tax revenue to the far right, over here is the city of Salina transient guest tax. If we use the Idaho protocol, it would be a smaller number than the 330.6 that the Kansas protocol calls for. In total, the, you can see that the Kansas protocol would call for $2.6 million in added taxes. So this would be state, county, city, and your transient guest tax. Now, this is annual. If the flight goes in and we help them with the overnight, there's no reason short of another pandemic, or something of that nature, that they would take it out. You know, once they've established the overnight, particularly at a location where there's maintenance capability, they're going to start using that maintenance capability. I can't recall overseeing the schedule at American and ever parking a plane overnight at a place that had a maintenance base and not using it. And so we have these other benefits, these other potential benefits to the community, which is that MRO, that MRO opportunity, or that maintenance opportunity that you heard that was previously there and previously supported by you folks, was tied to the creation of this new airline, this 30-seat airlined, SkyWest Charters LLC is what that was to be called. And that is still pending approval. That still may happen, and Salina would become the maintenance base if that were to happen. SkyWest bid this under the assumption that that's not going to happen anytime in the short term, and they're going to continue to operate these 50-seat United Airlines-coded flights, if you will. But there's two conditions precedent that an overnight will bring. The first one is overnight maintenance, of course, and I think that that's a very good opportunity for one vision for the community to add some, add good jobs. And then what that maintenance capability provides is the ability to move planes and crews between different systems. So United has a hub, of course, at Chicago. They have a hub in Houston, and they have a hub in Denver. SkyWest operates the regional product, the regional flights for all three of those. SkyWest needs to get crews and planes back and forth for maintenance and other reasons, just to facilitate the daily operation, and they use what we call bridge routes. And so your geography in the center of the country is perfect for this. However, if it would be viewed from a Houston standpoint, the Houston route would be viewed as providing operational flexibility. It wouldn't be started for commercial reasons. There's a lot of traffic that could be generated, but SkyWest, remember, will only be reimbursed for 12 of these round trips under the Essential Air Service Program. And there are, you know, much, much larger cities clamoring for air service from SkyWest. There's some 79 cities that have actually been cut as a result of the pilot shortage, you know, that we just went through, that the industry is coming out on. But without this overnight, there's no maintenance base, and there's no Houston, not, no possibility. So the cost, of course, as you heard Tim say, it's close to $3 million. They're not able or willing to cancel an early morning departure or late night return in another city. They're all doing well. All these other overnight flights are profitable. So what that means is, they have to activate another plane. It takes roughly 10 pilots per every plane, for every new plane that you activate, five crews. Each pilot is only allowed to fly up to 75 hours per month under federal air regulations. So you have, you have to have a lot of, a lot of crew that you have to throw at that. You have incremental flight attendants, of course, incremental mechanics, and so that's going to be the biggest startup expense. Their 2.98 million, you see that here, and as you heard Tim say, they have corroborated, they have corroborated that number. They say, yes, that's what it would cost us. And so that 2.98 million in cost, of course, is separate from that 500,000, that they're contributing to operate the full schedule, and they're not asking for any reimbursement for that. So the opportunity summarized, they'll connect Salina to 32 more cities, round trip, major cities, not, not, not other regional markets around the country, but Los Angeles, Las Vegas, Phoenix. That drives, drives a lot of commerce, both inbound and outbound. A lot of people want to go to these places. The additional implements generated will generate somewhere between 10 and 26 million based upon these two different state protocols, increasing Salina's transient guest tax revenue if we use the Kansas protocol by 330,000 annually. It's a prerequisite to other goodness, the maintenance base and, and, you know, the potential for Houston service, once the maintenance base is established, that would make it very attractive. Salina would be, just for context, the only essential air service market with service to three hubs if that were to occur. So it doesn't generally happen. So it's a, it's a tremendous opportunity, one, kind of once-in-a-lifetime, one-time opportunity right here, you know, and again, it's afforded by, more than anything, just the, just the relationship that Salina has with SkyWest Airlines. You know, they always lobby hard for the, for SkyWest initiatives on Capitol Hill, and it's very much appreciated by them. So they, they agreed that they would put in this overnight flight seven days a week if we could help them offset a portion of the cost. And I believe that's it.
Gary, thank you.
You bet. My pleasure.
Would like to just stand for questions that the commission may have, or further direction from the commissioners, and...
I'll offer a couple of wrap-up things. So as part of this conversation and the EDO questions and some of the individual questions I received from you, in coordination with Tim and Gary, tried to distill out of that presentation the information that you found at your desk today. So I'll walk you through that quickly, and I'll walk you through kind of what I think your options are, and then we can certainly open it up to questions. So as everyone indicated, the estimate is 8,000 additional implements, and so that's outbound incoming. If you break that down, that's 22 additional implements per day over a 365-day schedule. The total request, as I reported, between the city, county, and airport authority is $900,000. Again, if there's seven flights a week, and in my way of thinking, I wanted to break that down in terms of the value of the incentive per flight, and Tim can speak to this in greater detail, but the intention would be that this would be a one-year agreement with SkyWest, with a reimbursement scenario, whereas they provide the overnight flights that'd be reimbursed on a monthly basis. Beyond that, the hope is that they would choose to extend beyond that, but we wouldn't necessarily have a binding commitment on their part. So if you look at it from a one-year basis, and that 900,000 number, that's $2,465 a flight. On a two-year basis, it's 1,200, on a three-year basis, $821 a flight. If you just focus on the city's contribution, again, looking at that one, two, and three-year breakdown, it's 1,095 for a one-year, 547 for a two-year, and 365 for a three-year. So, and I would acknowledge that while we've looked at cost-benefit analysis and breakeven, there is just added benefit to the traveling public, whether that's the business community or the leisure community, regardless of whether that has a direct quantifiable spinoff back to the city. But then, kind of diving into the numbers in terms of the hotel revenue, whether you look at their $4.3 million number for total revenue, or $330,000 estimate for transient guest tax, assuming $150 a night, which is purely an assumption on my part, that breaks down to 78 room nights per day additional to generate that 4.3 million or 330,000 of transient guest tax revenue. In terms of the annual visitor spend, whether you look at the Idaho model or the Kansas model, the 9.7 million or the 25.7 million over 8,000 additional implements, on the low end, the 9.7 million, then that backs into additional spend per employment of $1,212. On the high end, at that 25.7 million, that's $3,212 per employment. And then lastly, the additional spending, hotel spending just due to SkyWest and their crews, as indicated, translates to seven, in assumption of seven rooms a day at $150 a room, and about $30,000 of transient guest tax. I offer all that up to kind of decipher or take a look at the underlying assumptions that correspond with the numbers that were in that slide deck. I don't personally, it's difficult to personally ascertain, you know, exactly what might transpire. As Tim mentioned, there is no known cost-benefit model for this, but, you know, at its most basic, assuming 22 additional implements, assuming 78 additional room nights per day, and assuming somewhere between $1,200 and $2,200 spend per employment. Now, that, I can't speak to the direct versus induced in some of those factors. Lastly, then, the items that we offered for your consideration was that you could approve the motion, accepting and concurring with the EDO's recommendation, and authorizing the reallocation of that $400,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement. That agreement would have to be prepared and drafted, very reminiscent of the authorization that you gave for the MRO approach. You could approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. Obviously, that it starts to turn into a negotiation with SkyWest, and just because you proposed the amendment doesn't necessarily mean it works for SkyWest. That probably prompts some additional consideration conversation. Or you could postpone consideration and give us additional direction on any additional information that you might like. And then lastly, you could, you know, take no action and essentially deny the request. So with that, I'll stop. I expect there might be questions and additional conversation that maybe the three of us can help with.
Okay, I'll start over here where I left.
I don't have any questions, really. I feel like the reasoning's very sound, and I appreciate the additional information about the other revenues. The tax revenues will probably recoup, and I think it's, I agree that it's kind of a generational opportunity. I know we've stepped forward in the last decade to revamp our downtown, and this air service is essential to the whole goal of making Salina more viable and more attractive to everybody in the region. So seeking out the overnight maintenance base and the additional service to Houston, I think ought to be our goal. So looks like a good proposal to me.
I really can't add anything to that, other than I'm tired of driving back from Kansas City at 10:00 at night.
Yeah, somebody that's directly experienced, you know, that change in habit because of the early flights out, I see that statistic very clearly, and we were there before. I think we can completely, and we were building on that, so I think that we'll grab that right back and continue to grow.
That is exactly the case. Our forecast got devastated by pandemic and our forecast for growth, and the overnight non-stops is a good positive outlook. In fact, the terminal building study for renovating and enlarging the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal, the long-term passenger growth is up to 40,000. We are stagnant now. We are stuck at this level, less than about 18,500, and that was due to the tag and the loss of the overnight flight.
Look to my right. What is the, what is the current Denver and Chicago schedule?
Current schedule, that Denver flight comes inbound, it doesn't leave Denver until after all the bank is done. So it's, there's, it leaves Chicago late, Denver late, and leaves around 7:00 in the morning, 7:30, and arrives midday around 10:00 A.M., 9:30, 10:00 A.M., and then it goes back to Denver. It does not pick up any aircraft, any, any of the West Coast banks coming in, because it's too late departing, and then it's too late, it does rise back in Denver, and there are no banks outbound. The morning bank at Denver, when you get back in at 7:00 A.M., you reach an Omni Bank, and that's if this flight, the proposed schedule, the draft schedule that SkyWest is looking at, is departing Salina at 7:41 to get into Denver, right as that bank exits, outbound flights go. So, and there's, and there's no inbound flights coming in for the, for the departure to Salina for people to catch. It's an outbound bank going out of Denver at 7:00 A.M., if that makes sense.
So it comes, it lands here around 10:00 and departs?
Yeah, it's non-stop. Right now, it's non-stop from Denver, and it stops in Hays, and then from Hays, it goes on back to Denver. Aircraft departs Denver, goes out from the hub, goes out to the spoke, then goes back to the hub.
And the early morning flight would replace this flight, or would be in addition to?
It would replace it.
Okay.
But you just, again, cannot move that flight to become an overnight without the additional expense to start that overnight up.
Well, I see this in a little different light, that convenience and for people that can afford to fly to San Francisco, to L.A., and everyday citizens, this is not a benefit to. And I don't think this is a wise, was not intended for the economic development dollars. And the only way I could support this is if, I got a little more information than the rest of commissioners, because I sat in on the economic development meeting last week. This is just one year, and that's a lot of money to invest, to subsidize an airline for one year. And the only way I could support this is if it could be contingent to the three-year contract with SkyWest.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think it was very informative and well-done. I mean, based on the numbers, if they come to fruition, it seems like a good investment in the community, and, I mean, I think one thing worth considering is, a lot of that travel was business travel, and I think there'd be some heads of some major corporations here that would probably differ on that opinion as far as it just being for people who are traveling on a leisurely basis. I'm really excited by the prospect of an option to Houston for a multitude of reasons, and I just think it's another component to add to our community, to make it more vital or more, you know, invigorated, so to speak. We're trying to grow, we're trying to be more accessible, and it just seems like a nice piece to the puzzle.
You know, another thing to consider, you know, I've driven to Wichita to fly to Houston, and it's amazing the places you can go to from Houston. If you're going to the East Coast, it's actually not a bad place to transfer in the wintertime, because it's unlikely you're going to get a snow or ice delay. But the other thing, you know, we're not providing air service just for Salina. I have yet to sit next to somebody from Salina, I used to travel out of Salina, people from Wichita, people from Beloit, I mean, up to the Nebraska border. So this is a regional effort, and that graph was rather dramatic. The folks that we lost were the business travelers, the leisure travelers. It's amazing how constant that number is. But when you look at what may seem like a small number of business travelers, those business travelers run the corporations that hire those everyday citizens. So there is a trickle-down benefit, and, you know, I've, of course, most of my trips are Washington, D.C., but I got kids on both coasts, and it's been near impossible to use the Salina connection recently. It's, unless I want to leave East Coast at 6:00. It's, uh, unless I wanna leave east coast at six in the morning, uh, which kinda defeats the purpose of spending the night there, because I'm gonna have to get up early in the morning. Uh, but I think it would be a lot more attractive to, to our businesses, and, again, not just Saline County, but, but regionally. You just get people used to the idea of using Salina for, for everything.
And you really think that subsidizing it by twenty-five, nearly twenty-five hundred dollars per flight is a good investment?
You know, I would look at the four hundred thousand dollars as a, well, if you wanna call it a community block grant type, it's, it's what you get for the whole, uh, be, you know, the, the idea, obviously, if, if it's wildly successful, uh, it would not need as much subsidy as time goes on, because it becomes self-sustaining. But it's a startup cost, I mean, and we help plenty of other businesses here in town with startup money, either in direct cash, or, you know, forbearance of taxes, or, uh, I mean, the second half of our agenda here is helping businesses get started. And it's, it's a lot more than four hundred thousand dollars.
This was originally designated to start up a maintenance, overnight maintenance facility that would create jobs.
Well, but there's stages. This, you know, it's not something you just-
And this is not that, and I don't think it's a good use of our economic development dollars.
But you look at the projects we have now, when they started five, six, seven years ago, you know, we had to make similar decisions. You look at what we have now and say, oh my God, do you mean, we didn't, would not have wanted to help Schwanz, or, or Great Plains, or Kubota? And, you know, once the development occurs, you can't imagine your community without it. And this is, this is the startup. I mean, there's a certain prestige that goes with the city, 'cause we have a medical school, three nursing schools. I mean, educational, this is a great place. Uh, there's a prestige and, and attraction that goes with having non-stop jet service to the cities we currently have, and it just makes it a-
We already have that.
Well, but we didn't-
Yes, we already have it.
Yeah, but we need to keep it. Uh, just, just-
You want the icing on the cake, too?
Oh, I want the icing, the, the whole, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would just add that the advantage is that, just like in downtown, we've also got partners in this. I fully expect the county to be behind this, and we've got the airport authority behind it as well, so, uh, I just look at it as a, doing our part of the investment. Uh, it just let, gives us additional leverage to get to that maintenance facility if we can, and that other trip to Houston. So I think it's important to keep that in consideration.
I think it's one more component, um, as far as making the, the city more attractive to people who are looking to move here. I mean, accessibility, we have, we have the interstate intersecting I-135 and 70, and to me, this is just another component to that. We're, we're easy to get to, we're centrally located, there's a lot of people relocating here, and, um, access to an airport that's actually gonna take you somewhere, like a major hub, like Houston, Chicago, Denver, that's an important part of it.
Yeah, this, this is a proposal that I've struggled with a little bit, and have talked to, to the city manager about, and again, ex, um, board member and, and chairman of the board of the Airport Authority, and I, um, a couple of questions, um, and I believe from reading the blue sheet, the, the nine hundred, or the, our four hundred thousand would not be paid upfront, that would be paid monthly as, as these flights are-
The, the agree, the incentive agreement that'll be, would be finalized with SkyWest, SkyWest Airlines, would provide that the incentive would be paid upon completion of overnight flights. I mean, that's a known and proportional monthly per completed overnight flight, then we would, uh, they would invoice, and, uh, and then they would be reimbursed for flights completed. It's the best measure, 'cause you can see the schedule, you know flights are completed, and it's, it's verifiable. And so, yes, it would be, uh, based upon flights completed.
The, but there's not a one-year guarantee. I know, uh, Commissioner Longbine would like a three-year guarantee, but is there a guarantee that they will do this for at least twelve months, or can they pull this at six months of?
Well, the agreement can be written for a twelve-year agreement, twelve-month agreement.
Twelve-year agreement, okay.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me. Uh, edit that one out, and so it's a twelve-month agreement. And so, so it's a year agreement for the year it takes to establish the, the overnight flight. The tie to a three-year agreement is a tie to the three-year, uh, essential air service contract. That is, we're only the second market that SkyWest has recently bid on a three-year basis, and that's the longest essential air service contract that I've seen over the years. So that's an indirect tie to that, uh, commitment, and as Gary indicated, once the overfl, overnight flight gets established, it becomes an operational bridge between Denver and Chicago, and that's what, that, that's the magnet to attract the, the, uh, Houston flights. Houston could be initially a three-day-a-week schedule and growing to five, then the transition cruise between the three hubs, but until you have an oper, an overnight and an operational, and can establish as an operational bridge, you, we get stuck and be able to go to, go to Houston, without dreaming up or coming back and having a huge incentive requirement on that, which is not going to go, would not go forward. So it's, the airline will not commit to a three-year commitment on this overnight flight one year, based upon the startup incentive, but then you know that they have a three-year contract to be in the market for three years.
Do, the, the Houston flight, do you believe that if, if this came to, to be, that we would be hit up again for startup dollars for the Houston flight?
No.
And that's a conversation you've had with SkyWest?
We had Houston queued up, uh, this is behind the scenes, and queued up in a schedule before, um, some key, uh, again, events beyond our control. It was queued up because they needed an operational bridge. As SkyWest rebuilds their system, as United rebuilds their systems, their hubs at Houston, uh, Chicago and Denver, that need for that operational hub will come back. That's the effort, the Airport Authority, and partnership with Gary Foss and ArcStar, we start then reminding SkyWest that they had Houston in the schedule on their own, and the key is, Gary pointed out, it's not a revenue necessarily producing flight, it's operational flight to transition crews and aircraft in between these three hubs, so it becomes an operational cost that doesn't require the revenue, uh, you know, the guarantee or any revenue as far as the passenger flow, the passenger levels.
Could I ask the same question as it relates to overnight maintenance? Uh, we, we're kinda redirecting the, the funds that we had identified for overnight for this purpose. What do you, what do you foresee there?
You still have overnight maintenance on a Ron, remain overnight, that's the, the airline nomenclature for it, but the overnight flight becomes critical. It has to depart on time, because it's the first flight out. It's their first flight to get back to the hub, then to pick up the passengers that are, to get the passengers to that, those departing flights, and then continue the line of flying for that, that day. I mean, that jet will fly as much as eight, twelve hours a day. I mean, it just doesn't fly between here and, uh, Denver, then it goes on to other routes, Laramie, you know, goes up to, to Scotts Bluff. It will do a route of flying, but eventually get back to Denver, late afternoon, early evening, pick up the passengers, back to Salina. But that flight has to go out the next morning, so that flight, it's almost, it just, uh, it starts, it just happens. With One Vision here, the capability to do overnight maintenance that is required to get it on the line, keep it online, revenue flying, also, it just organically starts to happen. They start seeing, okay, we need this check, this check, and that check done, well, One Vision's there, we'll have them do that check.
So will we be doing the overnight maintenance here, or that's just a potential?
No, it will have overnight maintenance involved with this overnight flight, because it has to be ready to fly the next morning.
Is that, was that, was that your question?
Yeah, I think so. And I call it overnight maintenance. Previously, we referred to it as an MRO.
Right, well, MRO. One Vision is the maintenance repair and overhaul business. Overnight maintenance is what they perform on a jet that's on the ground overnight. This is not at the scale that was proposed on the SkyWest charter, where that would be multiple aircraft coming in from different locations. This would be now, it's one jet, doesn't mean it can't be added to that. It'll take longer to get to that point. How long that is, it's not gonna be decades, it's gonna be probably more along the line as we work to bringing Houston online. We always point to the fact, you have overnight maintenance available at One Vision.
Yeah.
We use that as our drawing card.
Yeah, I, I struggled a little bit with, uh, some of the transient guest tax numbers and stuff. They, to me, they seem somewhat inflated. Again, I can't prove them right or wrong, that's just my gut feeling. Um, and, and the other thing, I guess, uh, a little bit with Commissioner Longbine is, is this the best use of our economic development dollars? I mean, I love the seven o'clock flights, I think that's, uh, is, is, to be in that air service, that really is important, I think, but, again, we had the money set aside, the, our four hundred thousand to, to start up the, the overnight maintenance, and then that was gonna get us the Houston flight. So I'm, I'm struggling, because I see both sides. I see Commissioner Longbine's comments, and I also see the, the other three commissioners' comments, and, and it's, I'm, I'm torn between which way to, to really go.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the overnight maintenance center will be self-supporting.
Yes.
And, and it really would not require-
But originally, that was-
Because the airline would need it more than, I won't say more than we would, but it, it becomes a necessity for the airline.
Right. Once they have their aircraft parked overnight, they have to do overnight maintenance. So the incentive is not going to the overnight maintenance aspect, as was the SkyWest charter, tools and equipment setting up for that. This is, you know, the jet needs overnight maintenance to be ready to fly, go to, go back in revenue service and carry passengers departing Salina, you know, at six forty-five.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Ben Wynn-Holz-Salina, I'd agree with Commissioner Longbine, is this a good use of our dollars? 'Cause there's probably quite a few of us here in town, taxpayers that don't fly, um, so we're not even gonna get anything from this like we would from our parks, or downtown, or anything else. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember right, a year and a half ago, SkyWest was leaving Salina. And now, all of a sudden, we're gonna give them incentive money to keep them here? 'Cause we begged them to stay here in the first place. Also, are they gonna have another jet available? Because if you're doing overnight maintenance on a plane, um, and I'm sure there's a massive checklist that has to, has to happen by, um, government standards to keep a plane in the air, if there's a mechanical issue, or that plane cannot travel the next morning, uh, what are you gonna do if, if One Vision shuts it down?
Probably the same thing you do if you're in Washington DC, you wait till they get a plane.
What, that leads me to one other question I had here. What is our current, um, SkyWest, what is our, uh, percentage of flights that are, that are on time, or that have not been canceled?
SkyWest is one of the leaders in the industry, and, uh, Gary Foss prepares a monthly report that includes on-time, uh, arrival at Denver and Chicago separately, and the, the, the metric is within fourteen minutes of scheduled arrival time, and they're consistently, you know, eighty-five to ninety percent, uh, and actually beating the average of the air, other air carriers in those markets. Completion rate is, is, is over ninety percent completion rate. Uh, yes, there have been cancellations, uh, due to weather, and, uh, many times, that, that's really not a, doesn't get categorized as a, as a, as a cancellation, because, I mean, you know, the practice is to do a recovery flight, probably the next day. Say thunderstorms have occurred, uh, at Chicago, and they cannot depart, they're not gonna depart into, to a thunderstorm, but they'll, uh, not just, they'll have a recovery flight the next morning and fly. Um, SkyWest does have a policy where they do have aircraft that, if there is a mechanical that aircraft cannot get off the ground, they will send in a recovery jet, and a jet that will be available. Uh, it's not on the ground here, but it will come out at one of the hubs, and then they will arrive, and then there'll be a delay, but they will complete the flight. That's a normal practice. Um, probably need, like to comment that, yes, uh, SkyWest's part of the process, the issue to notice the termination to, uh, uh, twenty-nine markets at one time. Uh, I'm not gonna characterize it as, as begging, but we did present Salina's case to SkyWest Airlines and to United Airlines, and subsequently, within a matter of weeks, SkyWest ter, rescinded the notice to terminate at Salina, Kansas. They are a valued partner, dependable partner, and, uh, they are committed to this market. That is also why we're getting kind of first opportunity to consider this overnight, uh, overnight flight option.
Is this on the county's agenda tomorrow?
It is not. Uh, I think county, uh, commissioners and county staff, they're at a Association of Counties, uh, conference this week, so this would be on the calendar for a week from tomorrow.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move to accept and concur with the SEDO recommendation to authorize the reallocation of four hundred thousand dollars of economic development funds, to provide the city's portion of the contribution to the project as recommended, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the use of such funds. Uh, just a question, should, there be some reference in that motion to what the actual project is? That's kind of a blank check motion.
Certainly. Um, so it would be, uh, funding of overnight flights, um, for a one-year, uh, on a reimbursement basis for a one-year period, um, seven flights a week.
Is it okay if that?
Yeah.
Add that to it? Please, thank you. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion as second, and I'm just gonna abbreviate it to approve, um, accepting and concurring with the SCEDO recommendation, um, reallocating the four hundred thousand of economic development funds to overnight flights with SkyWest Airlines. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that item passes three to two. Okay, that will bring us to item six point five.
Item six point five, approve ordinance number two-three-dash-one-one-one-eight-seven on first reading relating to prohibitions against any pub, excuse me, against any person obstructing in public places pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicular parking.
Okay, Mr. Schrag.
Yep, that would be me. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, as, as has been a topic of conversation over a few months now, uh, we've had a couple of phenomena in the downtown that you've received feedback about, and you've asked staff to take a look at, and, and that is individuals, uh, blocking sidewalks for an extended amount of time, whether they're sitting on them or laying on them, and then also, uh, blocking parking in designated parking areas. And so, I, I won't belabor the, the legal analysis, but I would tell you that, uh, as simple as that may seem, um, there are some, some complex legal considerations based on case law and other district courts, more so than the district that we're in, um, but with the help of, of city legal counsel, uh, we took a look at, at the applicable case law and, and court cases, and tried to prepare for you an ordinance that's narrowly tailored to address those two particular items and, and avoid any, uh, legal or constitutional, uh, difficulties. So the attached ordinance that's been provided for you makes findings relate to the need for the basis of the ordinance to, to address those two phenomena. It defines obstruction of pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicle parking spaces. It defines public places where these requirements apply. It defines sitting or lying for the purpose of being able to interpret the ordinance, and it makes it unlawful in a public place- it makes it unlawful in a public place to obstruct pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or, or marked vehicular parking spaces, with a few exceptions. And so the attached ordinance, I also attached ordinance as it relates to prohibiting, prohibition of camping in public spaces. That was adopted in 2021, the fall of 2021, and the proposed ordinance supplements that, that camping ordinance. So it, it is an opportunity for clarification of the issues. It's an opportunity for additional enforcement, as we've discussed previously in and of itself. I don't know that it'll eliminate those behaviors, but it, it gives us a couple of additional pieces of, of, of regulation that the police department can utilize as they interact with these individuals. Be happy to walk you through the ordinance in greater detail if you like, and, and I may have to quickly call in, on legal counsel to help with some of the, the nuances of, of it, but it, I think it's pretty straightforward at this point in terms of defining those activities and prohibiting those activities. There's no direct fiscal impact associated with the ordinance. There'll be enforcement activity on the part of the police department, and so we've identified the typical set of options for your consideration. You could approve the ordinance number 2311187 prohibiting obstruction in public places, pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicular parking. You could approve it with amendments, subject to legal support in that regard. You could postpone consideration to a specified date, provide staff with direction regarding additional information that you might like, or you could approve it on first reading and postpone second reading and provide feedback on additional information that you'd like. Or lastly, you could vote to deny the ordinance, leaving those as not being prohibited activities. I guess one additional clarification is, we did include language about obstruction of bathrooms as well, correct?
Correct.
And so in addition to obstructing pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicle parking spaces, it does include obstruction of public restrooms as well. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Start over here to my right.
Well, first I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to go through that, because I don't like, imagine the, the intricacies of this, and that's probably an understatement. It seems to me like it's common sense. I mean, don't obstruct the walkway, don't, don't hang out in the parking stall if you're not in a vehicle, but this is what we needed to do to clarify things. The question I had mostly was, assuming this is going to be an offense where there's probably going to be a fine attached to it, not a requirement to appear in court, or how, how does that work?
Yeah, it'll be a typical municipal citation, so there'd be a fine associated, and it could include court appearance, it could include failure to appear, and, and all the consequences that flow from that.
So in terms of enforcement, it would be, would they just issue an NTA, or I'm sorry, notice to appear?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, that was my question. Has the penalty or fine been established?
Well, we have a, a general set of, a, a range of fines provided in the code, so we don't necessarily establish them ordinance by ordinance. It gives the municipal judge a, a range for similar type violations.
Okay. And is there going to be some effort of public education to let people who are common violators know that this is the new law?
Yes. Between our response, the service providers that we work with, police department coresponders, there'll be an opportunity to explain the change and, and see if we can change the behavior.
Okay. And for Mr. Binkston, has this been tested in the courts and prepared for an ACLU appeal?
I would say tested in the courts in this form would be a bit of an overstatement. What this represents, and other communities are looking to the same model.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is have other communities been down this path?
Yeah, this is, I, I believe it's fair to say it's consistent with what other communities have done, particularly after the decision that led to the approach that we took in the camping ordinance as well, and that it is designed to take into consideration everything that we've been able to see and learn from what available cases have told us. But to say this, you know, this precise ordinance, that somewhat remains to be seen. And I say that, when I say this precise ordinance, I mean those that are consistent with this approach. And as you could probably tell from reading it, it is designed to address the matter from a public safety standpoint. And that is the legitimate exercise of your, I always hate to use the term police powers because that is often not understood, but anytime you're regulating in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare, you're exercising your police powers. But as I say, as you noticed, I would expect it is couched in terms of the public safety aspect of the matter. Okay, thank you. It might be also of interest to the mayor and commissioners, as you would expect, this has been reviewed and meets the approval as well of the city prosecutor. That's frankly, in many ways, more important than our role, but it's certainly been done and, and completed and structured based on discussions with the city prosecutor and the chief of police.
So this is pretty much parallel of a camping ordinance then?
Well, it, they're designed to fit together, if you will. As you may see, we did not modify at all the camping ordinance. It remains in effect and will be enforced in that way. We did update, if you will, those sections that you see appearing in chapter 35, and you'll see, I might explain that the repeal there that you see of section 25-162 was a rather just generalized obstruction ordinance that we had in place, but was not as specific as this is now.
Thank you.
Does this imply someone sitting on a sidewalk, resting on their sleeping bag, is technically camping, as opposed to just sitting? And do they have to be impeding progress of other people to be, you know, because we have some pretty wide sidewalks? And where's, where's the difference between just, you know, I'm tired, I have a sleeping bag, it's rolled up, I'm just going to sit here, and people can walk past me? You know, they're not hallucinating, they're not throwing things at people, they're not creating a public nuisance, they're just sitting. Is that considered camping?
I don't know that it's considered camping, but the, the definition of obstructing pedestrian traffic is to intentionally walk, stand, sit, or lie, or place an object in such a manner as to obstruct or impede the free passage by another person or a vehicle. And so if you are, sleeping bag or no, if you're laying on the sidewalk or sitting on the sidewalk and obstructing the, the passage on the sidewalk, then I think this is invoked.
But is that the entire sidewalk? I mean, I could see three, I would think any public demonstration would automatically be caught under this, if just not moving out of a two-foot square area of a piece of concrete is considered obstructing when people can walk around you? I'm, I'm just asking because I, I could see a lot of well-intentioned activities by folks who think this was written for somebody else. They're going to get caught in this, in this.
Yeah, there is a section of exceptions that tried to identify some of those, and then you, you brought up, I think you intended to bring up free speech issues that also come into play, but we tried to take all that into account, and accounting for the exceptions, the general obstruction that doesn't fall within an exception would be subject to citation.
I mean, a bunch of high school kids after a football game or a Friday night could be standing in a, it may look like a gang, but it's just a bunch of high school kids, you know, hanging out on the sidewalk. People have to walk around them. I mean, that's obstructing free passage. I, I just.
My hope would be that that interaction would be, and, and a communication to not obstruct the sidewalk while people move on. If it's a recurring violation, then you're probably subject to citation.
This comes down to the fact that people are afraid to walk down the sidewalk on Seventh Street, much like many of the sidewalks in Portland and Seattle.
Right, but this is, this is going to be valid in the front of, you know, our church, or it's going to be valid in front of my house. I mean, if, if by these definitions, you know, you, you can define an obstruction, this is a very wide definition. If that person on the sidewalk is not making any threats to you.
The sidewalk is for walking on, not sitting, same as a parking place.
Are our sidewalks defined that rigorously?
I don't know, there's been, I'm not aware of a definition of the purpose of sidewalks. I mean, not to say that that isn't a common expectation, but.
Common sense tells me the sidewalk is for walking on.
So, and if I could, to your prior point about the breadth of this, and Mr. Binkston can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but in part, that, that's the point that was being made earlier, is that it's, we're coming at it from a public safety standpoint, and the prosecutor's involvement, legal counsel's involvement, is something that's universally applicable, not something that is selectively directed. It, it, it needs to be one size fits all across the community.
I might add, if I may, Mayor and Commissioners, that this does transition to a policy discussion as well. It is not strictly a legal question, and the, you know, it, it has to pass muster with you all as a commission as to whether it's the, the approach you want to take on this matter.
I too appreciate the staff's work, and I think, you know, our real duty is to ensure that our public places are used as they're intended to be used, and, you know, if I'm, I'm, I'm very well may be in a walker before too long, or riding an electric conveyance, and I'd like to have a guarantee that I've got enough space to go down that sidewalk, and, and I think everybody in the community is pretty reasonable. We always have some bad actors, so I think this is necessary when people aren't being reasonable about their use of the public place. So I think it's a good start. Future commissions can always amend this, but again, I appreciate the staff's effort at molding this, given all of the, of the conversation across the country about how to deal with these things. So in Commissioner Ryan's example, is it a, if you transgress the law, only if you don't move, if he says, I don't have enough space to get by, or is it just the fact that you're there? Basically loitering is, I mean, what we're talking about.
No loiter.
I mean, that word's not in here, but I mean, that's what it boils down to.
Yeah, loitering in and of itself is commonly referred to, but I don't know that is currently supported by case law, so this is directed at obstructing pedestrian traffic now, or vehicular traffic. So if, if the, I don't think, I, I think it's enforceable if they are staying in one place, on the sidewalk or parking spaces, otherwise we're going to end up with, we'll just park in another spot. The, the intent is that it's not obstructing it for its intended use, I believe.
Well, I mean, we, we have analogies for where vehicles can go, but pedestrians can't. Anytime you get on the interstate, there's a big sign that says, not for horse-drawn carriages, you know, et cetera, et cetera, bicycles, pedestrians. It's intended for vehicles only. We also have places where vehicles can't go. I mean, it's intended just for pedestrians. But there's just, you know, sidewalks are for people to walk on. I don't, I mean, are we saying you, you can't stop?
Well, I think there's a certain amount of reasonability, and, and I'll use the word common sense. I mean, if someone's asked to move off of the sidewalk and they don't, then I think that's when you, 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 you have a problem. Now, to, to use your analogy, if there was a funeral, Mr. Ryan's company, and there's five people standing on the sidewalk in front of your church, I think obviously somebody walks up and says, hey, excuse me, I need to get by, they move, they were obstructing, but not unintentionally, and if they move, I don't think that's a, a violation. I mean, it's, I, it's reasonable ability that if someone's laying in the sidewalk, or they're blocking the sidewalk, and they're, and they're asked to, to move, or, or they continue to do it, then that's when I believe you have an issue.
Those are two different situations. Asked to move is different from continually, I mean, if they ask them to move, and they move, then it's no violation. If no one asks them to move, they're not really, I mean, if you can go around them, I, I, it's.
The situation we have, I mean.
We're craving a law to target certain people in town, and this is so wide, it's, it could be used by someone to target any group of folks on a sidewalk they don't like.
But it comes down to public safety. I, I can say that.
Yeah, but most people getting held up at night in our city aren't being held up.
The employees and patients of Salina Urology deal with this every day in fear.
I think what's worth mentioning is, you know, maybe making it more basic, I think this is a situation where we're choosing as a commission to look at the sidewalk as a means of conveyance, where it, it's not, it's not a place to, I mean, how much green space do we see near sidewalks that a person, if they were so inclined, I'm tired, I want to sit down, they can do that. How many, how many benches do we have intermittently, especially in the downtown area? But there's one more component, I think, that's worth mentioning, and I know we look at things like, that officers are these automatons that just, there's a law being broken, I'm going to inter, intercede, and I'm going to basically do some kind of enforcement action. That's not always the case. A, a lot of times, I, I don't see a lot of officers patrolling and looking for said violation unless there being, there's a reporting party saying, hey, there's, there's some parties here who are blocking the sidewalk and creating a problem. Because again, I think there'd be that, that, that interaction, that, you know, the usual, excuse me, you know, hey, let me, let me walk around you, or whatever, and that's just kind of a zero burger, if you will. But I think a lot of officers, if, if there's a problem, hey, just so you know, we have this ordinance for future reference, and, you know, hopefully, just the conversation will rectify the problem. And I can't speak for officers now, but I can tell you back when I was on patrol, that's exactly how I like to inter, interact with people. Because I, if it were up to me, I would, I don't want to arrest you, I don't want to write you a ticket, and I would argue that there's an officer that's that way, that's maybe he needs to choose, or he or she needs to choose a different career. It's about helping people and, and educating people about, with the law. And obviously, if there's a danger to the public, it's a different situation, which could be presented in this situation with various circumstances. I mean, if you have somebody who's under the influence, and they're, they're passed out, or if they're engaged in unsavory behavior, I mean, it's, it, it allows officers another tool to, to basically intervene. And I think, and not to get overly wordy about this, but I think another component to this is if we're talking about a, maybe a certain demographic that, that needs assistance, maybe not very willingly, going to partake in it, sometimes they need court intervention before they get on that road to, you know, sobriety, or, or no longer being addicted to something. And again, I see this as just kind of another tool in the toolbox, and if it's being misused, then maybe we can basically kind of re, redirect, or, or regroup, but, I mean.
And does this apply to public parks as well as sidewalks?
No.
And this, they're kind of, so this is sidewalks only?
Correct. Sidewalks and parking. Correct. Sidewalks and parking. Yep, and to Commissioner Linkowitz's point, there are alternate locations in very near proximity that through education, I fully expect you'll see people just kind of relocate.
So, how, how long does a person have to, or can a person stand still on the sidewalk before they are deemed an obstruction?
It's judgmental. It's not defined by ordinance.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I just see this, the way it's written, as one of those that has the potential to come back and bite us in the butt. I mean, if I'm tired and I just stand still on the sidewalk for three minutes because I'm old, I'm short of breath, you know, if someone doesn't like me, they could call and say, "Hey, this guy keeps standing, where I keep doing it, but he's, he's been there three minutes." Can, can you?
If you breathe hard enough, we'll consider it a medical emergency, which is exempt here, so.
Right, but see, all these, right.
I mean, at some point.
Require that you inquire of the person, ask them to inquire why they're, just being there alone is very wide latitude to.
I, I would guess that a lot of our ordinances and laws have some amount of, what's the word I'm looking?
Officer discretion.
Discretion in them. So, I, I have to have faith in the individuals that are gonna be administering that, that they will use reasonable discretion.
I think another thing worth mentioning is if the prosecuting attorney's office starts seeing questionable cases come through, that's gonna be a conversation. I mean, they don't just turn a blind eye. If, if there's like, let's just say hypothetically, there's, there's an officer who decides that, hey, this is just the greatest thing since sliced bread, and I'm gonna overuse it and, and harass the heck out of the public, God forbid, somebody's gonna get called to the carpet. This is not, there's accountability here. And I, I think that's something worth, worth mentioning, and I, and I know that everybody in this room knows it, but it, it bears repeating. You have body cameras, you have in-car cameras, you have, everybody has a, a video or means to, to make a video or, or take a picture. Despite some public members' opinion, that, these guys don't have complete autonomy to just do whatever they desire to do. There, there, there's reports that need to be written. There, there's a court that looks at these documents, and at some point, if there's an officer that's just completely out of hand, they're, everything they submit to that court is gonna become questionable and suspect. And again, there's, there's, this is a profession where people, their, their reputation is their lifeblood. If they lose, if, if they are determined in the court to be somebody who's not reliable, who's not truthful, who overexerts authority for, I mean, it, it's bad news in that profession. And I understand where you're coming from. I think we just need to kind of understand, or at least we have a community where our, our law enforcement officers, the selection process is a considerable one. It involves like psychological exams and profiles. Um, I don't know if they do the polygraph test anymore. They probably do that voice stress analyzer, I'm guessing. You go through the wringer here. You, you really do. And we don't just have these guys that we're throwing a badge at them, "Hey, there you go, have fun." They're professionals, and if they're not, they're not gonna last.
Is the thought that most of these interactions be brought about by citizen complaining? Or do we anticipate that our officers, if it's a quiet night or just patrolling the sidewalk and looking for folks who aren't moving?
Depending on the time of day, too.
Yeah, there, I would tell you, there is definitely an expectation, just by way of citizen report and business and organizational report, that it may not be a one-for-one. It may be that we continue to have this issue at that location. The expectation that the, the police are gonna keep their eye out for that versus a direct phone call and a response, you know, within minutes. But to Commissioner Linkowitz's point, it's not lost on me that just being cited alone is, is an inconvenience, but not only is there the prosecutor, there's the judge. Um, and I, I think the expectation on the law enforcement side is this is gonna be as much or more education of, "This is what the ordinances now say. You can't do this, that here." It almost begs the question, "But you can do that over here?" And it's gonna be a dialogue. And then if people, if individuals remain obstinate, that's when they get a citation.
So, we're basically gonna move people off the sidewalks if we don't want them on. So, they're gonna go somewhere until they get to a neighborhood where nobody files a complaint. You bring them into court. These folks don't have money to pay a court fee. Otherwise, they wouldn't be hanging out on the sidewalk. So, you know, we're tying up the courts. We're moving people away from a place where certain people are afraid of them. And I just don't, you know, I, I just see this as being challenged.
I agree with Commissioner Linkowitz's law enforcement, uh, review and aspect of it. This is gonna be a, a tool. You got a business, a proprietor down here. Today, they call, say, "I got these people sitting right in front of my store. People, my customers are afraid to come in." They call the police. The police say, "There's nothing we can do. They're on public property." This is gonna give the police a tool.
So, for how long can they stand there before they are obstructing?
Well, as Commissioner Linkowitz says, there's, there's a lot of officer discretion that comes into play.
Right. You know, officer discretion in this country has not been very kind to certain groups. And I just want it well, I just want it well-defined.
But our officers, I think, by and large, have proven themselves to be worthy of this trust. We don't have, I mean, unless I'm missing something, I've not heard of any recent claims that were substantiated, at least. So, and I'm not, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, and I apologize. But when I say officer discretion, it, it really encompasses a lot of components. Like, for instance, you mentioned maybe a pedestrian in front of your home. Well, at three o'clock in the afternoon, you've got somebody that's kind of parked there a little bit, maybe taking a breather, no problem. Three-thirty in the morning, and they're wobbling a little bit, and they're just hanging out, it's gonna, that's gonna be a question. And my underst, or at least my interpretation of this would be, "Hey, here's a gentleman in a neighborhood on foot, appears to be intoxicated, and he's standing in a sidewalk." Maybe that bodes, uh, some more investigation, and, and let's have a conversation. And for what it's worth, I mean, there's nothing to stop an officer from doing that anyway, regardless of this ordinance or not. It's basically, um, you know, if you see somebody that you're just kind of curious, "Hey, how are you doing this evening? What's going on?" And they can tell you to go pound sand, because that's right, and then you walk away. But on the same note, you, you can ascertain, is this person having a medical issue? Is this person intoxicated, maybe needs to be taken somewhere else for their own benefit? I mean, there's, I understand you can attach nefarious things to this, and I, I think you can do that with any law. I mean, if, if it's improperly enforced by somebody who's not a professional, there's, um, potential for abuse. But again, we, we have a very professional law enforcement community, and I think that if we approve this, and then there needs to be some modifications, we can look at it. But I think it's the case that we're just giving them another tool, and, um, hopefully it'll help rectify some problems that have arisen the last couple of years.
I, I have a lot of, I have a lot of faith in our, in our police chief. Um, I think he'll do a good job of, of trying to, uh, educate our, our officers on, on the new, uh, on this new ordinance. You know, having a business downtown and being downtown all the time, I've seen situations that I think our, our current police force has done a really good job of de-escalating situations and handle them really, really well, and, uh, I, I have to put faith in those people. I mean, that's what they're hired to do. Um, I think that we've done a good job of training them. So, uh, until I, until I see a problem, I, I, I'm gonna have to have faith that, uh, that this will be handled correctly. And I, I really believe it will be handled professionally, so.
If I could, I feel like I need to offer a couple of clarifications. One, you know, we described it in the, the staff report initially, is this being very narrowly tailored. And, uh, we said that from a legal perspective, and it is, but the, the, this will apply to some very specific circumstances. It will not apply across the board. We will still will receive phone calls as described from businesses that, that the ordinances, um, are, are not applicable. And so, this is not a one-size-fits-all panacea, which kind of leads me to, to the other point. We had scheduled day after tomorrow a, a forum on homelessness with an outside consultant that's had to be canceled due to their illness, but that, you know, this is more on the enforcement, uh, end of the spectrum. That conversation was intended to be on the broader, bigger picture beyond enforcement. What are the issues and what are the solutions? So, we are trying to take the conversation, uh, beyond this, but that's not, that doesn't make light of, of, you know, the specifics of this ordinance.
I, I think it's fairly well-written as far as the, the parking, blocking parking spaces. I think that's, you know, those spaces were intended for certain things. That also means, you know, no party's out behind Old Chicago in the parking garage when you don't wanna go home. Uh, someone can call police for that, for that group as well.
I agree.
Uh, and it was just the idea of what defines obstructing pedestrian traffic as opposed to just sitting on a sidewalk. Now, if Solana says, "Our sidewalks, you have to be moving at least point-five miles an hour at all times, or you're gonna be arrested." You know, you know, that's what we'll be known for, but.
I'd like to call the question. We've talked about this enough. If there's any public comment.
Yeah, you have to.
Yep, yeah.
Can't quite do that yet.
Yep. Is there, uh, comment from the public?
Where, Madam Solana? That's why they pay you the big bucks, Mr. Counselor. You tell them what they got, they can do. And if it goes to court, you're gonna have to defend them, your commissioners. That's all there is to it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Ben Whittall Solana again. Um, let's don't whitewash this for what it is. This ordinance is gonna be put in place for individuals who have checked out of society, defy authority, are either drug addicts or alcoholics, and that don't wanna be told what to do. You're normal people, like you're high school students and everything. They're gonna get out of the way if they're told to. Uh, I don't see this being a problem citywide. I know where we're, we're trying to do this in one area, which is the downtown area. Yes, they may move to somewhere else, but that's the way it is across the country. But this ordinance needs to be put in place, like Commissioner Linkowitz said, for a tool, like Mr. Longbine said, for a tool, for somebody to be able to either be educated on what they can and can't do, and let them defy authority and pay the consequences then, or be told that you need to move on, and they will abide by the law. So, you've gotta start somewhere. You can't just let them sit there and lay on the sidewalk and say, "Well, we can't do anything about it." You gotta have something in place.
Anyone else?
One que, when would this take effect?
Uh, as it's currently written, it takes effect on publication.
Right.
Um, you, you could have a delayed effective date if you wanted to amend the ordinance to provide for that.
I mean, just as far as educating the intended target of this.
The expectation would be, there would be, it, it would, it'd take effect, but much like any other ordinance, as you interact with the person, you're advising them of the ordinance first, and then see if you can get compliance.
And I'm, and I'm guessing the police department will be educated on it also, of it before, so. Okay, do I have any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11187 prohibiting obstructing in public places pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicular parking.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11187 prohibiting obstruction in public places pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, or marked vehicular parking. And this would be a first reading. We will have a second reading next week. Would that be correct?
Correct, yes.
This would be a first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
That item passes four to one?
Mayor, I would move we take a five-minute break and move item 6.6 to the bottom of the agenda, so these other folks here can, uh, have their issue heard.
Do we, do we need to just, I guess that's a motion, and if we second it, we can amend our agenda?
Well, I'll second that.
Okay.
6.6, I would assume would, uh, involve some citizen comment? Does that place an undue burden on citizens who will have to sit through longer portions of the meeting?
I'm thinking of Mr. Christie and Mr. Walter and, uh.
I think there's a possibility that item could take longer than 6.7 and 6.8 is what Mr. Commissioner Longbine's getting at. Why don't we put it before 6.9? Could we do that? No, I guess it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, we can just put it, let's put it at the end.
Do we actually need to vote on amending the?
Yeah, we need, uh, we have a, and did I have a second on that?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll take a five-minute break, but we are going to amend the, um, agenda to move item 6.6 to follow item 6.9. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
That item passes, or that motion passes four to one. We will be back in here at 6:30. Let's make it 6:34?
6:32?
32, 33. Yeah, I can't tell, the little number's up there, so. Yep, 32, okay. Okay, we are back in session and ready for item 6.7.
Item 6.7, approve ordinance number 23-11185 on first reading, authorizing the City of Solana, Kansas to issue taxable multifamily bond series 2023 for the Cedarhurst project in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Mr. Hennessy.
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. What this ordinance is before you is prior on October 25th, 2021, the city commission gave preliminary approval for the issuance of bonds and property tax abatement for the development of a project which involves a assisted assisted living center and memory care facility with 58 assisted living and 22 memory care apartments. Since that time, Dover Development, aka Cedarhurst, has constructed this and been constructing this facility. They are currently now in the final processes of finishing their punch list items for this, and they anticipate having the first residence in January. The reason that they, because this was over 50 units, they were under the criteria eligible for 100% 10-year tax abatement on this facility. And so since they are at the completion stage and they have met the overall number of units that were required for this, we're going forward with asking for your approval of the the bonds for this, for the property tax abatement. I do have Sarah Steele available for from Gilmore and Bell if you have any questions about the bond issuance, but I'm also available for any questions if you may have them.
I guess just for the public there, this is not an obligation of the city.
That's correct.
To make sure everybody's aware of that.
This is a process whereby it's a it's a highly technical process, but essentially in order to get the property tax abatement, the bonds are issued, it's held separately, but it is not an obligation on the city's part. It is, so there is no financial risk to the city if there is a default on the bonds.
I think that's always important to point out, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
People, it's not a financial obligation, but it is a city is foregoing some tax revenue. It's not an obligation in the true sense of the term, but we are foregoing 10 years of.
Tax, on IRBs, right.
Yes.
But we're not responsible for default or anything like that on the bonds.
Right, so it's not totally free to the cities, aren't they?
That's correct. This is a 10-year property tax abatement, so the city will not get the property taxes for this facility for the 10 years. However, there is a default or some other situation with the project or development, the city would not be liable for that. However, the city will not receive the increase in the value due to the development of this project.
Just as a clarification, we're saying the city, but all applicable taxing entities have.
That's correct, yeah.
Tax abated.
On the IRBs. And this was vacant ground prior to the the units being built on there. Questions coming?
I see this as another piece of the addressing the housing issue. This is going to be 70 units here that as people move from their homes to assisted living, that will make available those homes, so I think this is going to be a good investment long-term.
Any comment?
I agree with Commissioner Longbine. I don't have anything to add.
Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11185 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of multifamily revenue bonds series 2023, the Cedarhurst project, and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain and other related documents and actions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11185 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of multifamily revenue bonds series 2023, Cedarhurst project in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That item passes 5-0, and we will have second reading next Monday, correct? Okay, that will lead us to item 6.8.
Item 6.8, approve ordinance number 23-11184 on first reading, authorizing the City of Solana, Kansas to issue taxable industrial revenue bond series 2023 of Dominion Project in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,729,417.31 for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an additional manufacturing facility addition in the City of Solana, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions, and for the exemption of sales tax for material used in the construction of the project, and a 10-year property tax exemption.
Okay, Mr. Hennessy, your opinion.
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. Much like the prior item, this is an item that came before the city commission before. On September 26, 2022, the city commission gave preliminary approval for this project to go forward. GeoProbe Systems, aka Dominion, is they develop a lot of technical drilling, geotechnical equipment, and we're looking to expand their facility and their paint facility in particular. The initial estimate was this would be a $5 million expansion of the facility. They actually came in less than that at $3,372,941.31. So the the actual capital investment is less, but that also means that there's less of a rebate present on that. The unlike with the the prior item, this one also had a number, a significant number of new additional jobs. The original timeline was for 17 new jobs within three years. Mitch Robinson is here to talk about where they're currently at. I know that they have been facing some struggles in filling those positions, as we all know, but they are endeavoring. So if Mitch would like to come up and address the employment situation, we also have representatives from GeoProbe here for any questions you may have.
Mitch Robinson, Executive Director, Solana Economic Development. We've not really talked about the exact number, other than we're not at the 17 yet, but their intent is definitely to be having those folks hired by the three-year timeframe that was originally talked about last September. So really, this is this is kind of just a minor cleanup. Sarah Steele is still with us, but this is one of those things that in today's world is kind of odd. You have a project that comes in less expensive than you had originally projected, and that's what's happened. And we felt like city staff, we felt like we wanted to bring this back before you you all as the commission to make this approval again, because the numbers have changed, and we felt like that that was what was needed to be done. As part of the process, again, we work with our friends down at Wichita State, and you all think all received the impact analysis that they did. So by the reductions, and still, we talked about, well, how did they actually, the numbers went up? In talking with the Wichita State staff, the impact of the jobs have a larger impact because it's a smaller investment number. So that's why, looking at the benefit cost ratio, the city originally were at 1.7, well above the 1.0 standard, and now it's at 1.92. The county, which I know we're not, that's not a major factor, but the county number came in at 1.15 originally, they went up 1.2. The state, 6.4 to 9.94. For some reason, the school district did go down slightly, 1.31, down to 1.28. So those are kind of the hard numbers of the analysis that we mainly focus on through these impact analysis. So as has been said, we have two representatives here that can tell you a whole lot more about the project than than I can, but the building is done. It was, has been added on, and talking with them, you know, they're in a process of kind of finalizing and really focusing on what's the best uses for this this building. The company has been investing in all their three other facilities here in the community, and so we're fortunate to have them, and I've gotten to know several of their staff over this time, and it's one of those success stories that we're proud to have here in Solana. Answer any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mitch or for the?
No questions.
I've been on the other end of this several times with my previous employer. Is there a mechanism to track the job creation in place?
Strictly, that would be on us.
There's an annual reporting mechanism, and then I may be jumping ahead a bit, but this is all related to a payment in lieu of taxes, so there are also then provisions if they fail to meet the the agreed-upon employment numbers.
To my left? And and this is just a question to help me maybe as a commissioner. It's stated here, all 17 jobs have been created and are currently in effect, but those, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
And just out of curiosity, and maybe Mitch, if you can answer it, a representative of Dominion Project would. If you're looking to hire, if you're if you're having issues, is, could you fill in, is it just because of the workforce shortage? Is there something locally that housing would just be interesting to hear?
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners. Miles Walters, Controller of GeoProbe Systems, thanks for the opportunity to be here. So we have hired nine of the 17 jobs, so we are further along than the original application had listed. We're not at the 17, though. So for the position specifically in this building, which is assembly of highly technical equipment, they're not just standard assembly jobs, they have to be pretty specialized mechanic-type work. So we are working on our recruiting efforts to try to recruit that both in the community and in their surrounding areas as well. So good question.
So it's just finding the right person, huh?
It's finding the right team member to get on our bus, yep.
Well, I know it's a good company, and I'm sure you'll find those, and it's good to hear you've got nine of the 17, and so, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 23-11184 on the first reading, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds series 2023 in parentheses Dominion Project in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,729,417.31 for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11184 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds series 2023, Dominion Project in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,729,417.31 for the purpose of acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0, and we will have second reading next week. Thank you for bearing with us, gentlemen, and being here.
Thank you.
Okay, that will lead us to item 6.8.
Actually, item 6.9. So that'll be to.
Who are we going to put 6.6?
Just did.
No, let's go ahead. I move 6.6 to the back, yeah.
Approve ordinance number 23-11183 on first reading, updating and modifying where alcoholic beverages may be consumed on public property in the City of Solana, and restricting open containers at the same locations that are public property.
Okay, Mr. Hennessy.
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. What you have before you is an ordinance which updates the locations where alcoholic beverages can be consumed and where open open containers can occur on publicly-owned property. If you remember back in September of this year, we had a discussion about this, and it was very confusing, because remember, there was all the different types. There was beer, there were cereal malt beverages, there was alcoholic liquor. The city commission gave direction to basically incorporate all those various types and to treat them the same in the process of updating the ordinance. So what has been prepared is an ordinance which does incorporate that direction, excuse me, from the city from the city commission, and treats all of those different classes and just consolidates them as alcoholic beverages. What this ordinance does is provides a list, a comprehensive list of the public property locations where those alcoholic beverages either are or not allowed, or they're only allowed under a special use permit. A couple of things that I'd like to take notes that maybe changes or points to highlight in this ordinance is that the this is, the list is a comprehensive list of those public property locations. Worked extensively with a number of different city departments and others. This includes. This includes the city clerk, the, the city attorney, I'd like to thank them, the prosecutor, the police department, and the parks department. It's obviously a lot of work in order to really kind of develop this list. The fundamental goal of developing this is to make it very clear, both to the public as well as from an enforcement perspective, where alcoholic beverages are and are not allowed. This list can be modified by the city commission at any point in time if they feel that there is a, a need to change that, but we wanted to at least have it very clear, because it was very unclear before on where alcoholic beverages, depending upon their type, or were not allowed. The list, there is a color list that you have before you. That list is, is not in color, because it's going into the ordinance, but it is also incorporated into the ordinance, and it outlines where alcoholic beverages are permitted under the ordinance or they are not. I won't, the, the state statutes require an exemption by the city commission, and so those locations which are permitted are actually technically an exemption, but it, it becomes very confusing when you start referring to that. So, we utilize the language of permitted, which operates as that exemption, which is required under the state statute. A couple other points to make is that those locations where alcoholic beverages are permitted, open containers are also obviously permitted. If you permit consumption, it's kind of difficult not to allow open containers at the same location. However, those locations where it is prohibited, open containers are not allowed, and, and that is a change from the existing ordinances that are in place. Additionally, another change that is in effect is this prohibits, even in those locations where alcoholic beverages are permitted, does not allow for glass containers. This is something that we've discussed with the Parks Department. We looked at, at an even broader glass prohibition, but frankly, there's very little condiments and other that are actually in glass containers. So, we did incorporate a prohibition on glass containers for alcoholic beverages, even in those locations that, that are permitted. The, the special use permit, it is, another point that is important to remember is you, as the city commission, at any point in time could issue a special use permit for a prohibited location, which would then allow it. These are just the default provisions. It doesn't mean that it could not be permitted. It doesn't mean that this list in the future couldn't be modified at your own discretion. That's, you have very broad discretion as far as determining which sites are allowed to have alcoholic beverages. And the list, you will notice at the very end of the list, there is a prohibition against any public building or property which is not listed. So, by default, there is a prohibition on consumption in open containers on public property unless it's in the list as permitted, but again, that is subject to modifications to the list or the issuance of a special use permit. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the ordinance.
To my left?
Yep. I have to ask, what is kiva? How does?
Um, there's, there's a building in, in the back of Thomas Park that's kind of a unique construction, and it's just a, a term that refers to that particular hut type of building.
One of WEP projects in the back, kind of a round top building.
Yeah, when you make the turn in the west end of Thomas Park, the kiva is that building that you kind of circle around as you make that turn.
Thank you.
Learned something today, didn't you? Learned something today, didn't you?
Sure did.
I only know that because I asked that question.
Yeah. I've actually been there.
And I asked that question too.
I believe that was, is that a WPA project?
Yeah, I imagine.
I don't know if our deputy parks director knows that story or not.
It used to be the headquarters, the Girl Scouts.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's Deputy Director of Parks. I know it as a scout project, that they used it as their headquarters. I don't know if it was actually as old as WPA, but it, it was built to look and resemble that, but I don't know if it's that old or not. But we've just known it ever since I've been in it's base, it was for scouts. That's, so I, I just assumed they, they had built it.
It's a hoppy word used to refer to specialized round and rectangular rooms in modern pueblos.
So, the scouts aren't bringing alcohol to the camp out?
Hopefully not.
Not that anybody's aware of. Any questions or comments to my right?
No questions, just, I can imagine the amount of work that went into this, so thank you. It looks like this agenda you guys tackled quite a bit.
This has been the too-hard pile that's been accumulating for a bit, yeah.
No questions. Any questions or comments in the public? Bring it back for action. Move to adopt ordinance 23-11183 as submitted, updating and modifying where alcoholic beverages may be consumed on public property in the City of Salina and restricting open containers at the same locations that are public property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 23-11183 as submitted, updating and modifying where alcoholic beverages may be consumed on public property in the City of Salina and restricting open containers at the same locations that are public property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Okay, that will bring us to item 6.6.
Item 6.6, City Commission Meeting Schedule and Ordinance Passage Amendment, which consists of two motions. Item 6.6A is to approve resolution number 23-8174, amending the rules of procedure and order of business for conducting meetings of the Board of Commissioners regarding when regular meetings are held and the manner in which ordinances are adopted. And then item 6.6B is to approve ordinance number 23-11186 on first reading, amending Section 1-5.1 of the Salina Code regarding consideration of ordinances.
Okay, Mr. Schrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you well know, you approached staff not that long ago, inquiring about the possibility of, of making the proposed changes in terms of the number of, the meeting schedule, number of meetings a month, and, and then as a result of that, we also had a conversation about whether we do first and second readings. And so, you may recall, on August 28th, we presented a, a study session to you and went over that in detail, discussed kind of the, the basis of the meeting schedule, but then also discussed the statutory basis of second readings and the requirement for second readings, and how that had gone away by way of statutory amendment, but we had retained the second reading provision locally, and so it was at our discretion. So, there's quite a bit of discussion on your part. I would acknowledge that there may not have been unanimity, but there seemed to be consensus around two meetings a month and going to one reading for the passage of ordinances. UTAS staff with looking at the calendar and coming back and proposing possibly Mondays and Tuesdays were offered up in the conversation as well as to which Mondays of the month or Tuesdays of the month might be the most effective. I do want to acknowledge that there was some discussion about whether moving to Tuesdays might facilitate packet preparation and, and packet review. What I would tell you is that staff did spend quite a bit of time looking at the calendar, looking at the way holidays fall, looking at other boards and committees of the city in particular, Planning Commission and others, as well as the schedule of the county and the, and the use of this room. And what we ended up with was recognizing that more holidays seem to fall on the first and third Mondays, also looking at the timing of Planning Commission beings on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. It seemed like the second and fourth Monday synchronized with holiday, minimized conflicts with holidays, and synchronized with a reasonable turnaround time for an item to be before the Planning Commission and not have to be, you know, if the Planning Commission's on that Tuesday, not have to be in the packet that following Thursday, two days later, but to give about a week and a half of turnaround time. And so, we put a calendar in, in your packet for 2024, and it is color-coded in the, the black and white shading. May not be as conducive to, to interpreting that, but if you look, just use, well, January may not be a good example. Let's use February as an example. So, the Planning Commission meeting on the 6th of February, that item would then be before the city commission on the 26th. So, there would be, it, it wouldn't have to be out the door two days later. It would have about a week, a little over a week for preparation, and then it would be before you for action. So, we felt like that, that kind of dovetail, tail well. If we, we did take a look at Tuesdays, but that really starts to disrupt not only our meeting schedule, but the county's use of, of this particular meeting room as well. And then with respect to first and second readings of ordinances, the conversation was that if we're going to meet every, every other Monday, then that seemed a little impractical. And there was a notation on your part when we talked last about, you know, case by case, if something is a topic that you feel like deserves more deliberation, deserves more public comment, you can certainly postpone action and, and on an individual basis essentially create a longer review period on your part. With that, then, we looked at the, the, your rules of procedure are adopted by resolution, so that's the, the resolution amendment, and there was need to amend the rule that sets the, the meeting schedule, as well as there was, there is a rule that talked about first and second readings. So, the resolution makes those two amendments. Then the ordinance, all, by ordinance, we also address consideration of ordinances, and so that necessitated the ordinance to change to one reading. Those two items were added to the packet after it was distributed, so you should have those at your seat. Resolution 23-8174, the amendment to Rule Number 1 sets it for the second and fourth Monday. I did note in my, in my staff report that, as it's currently set up, and we kept the language, that if a regular meeting falls on a holiday, then that meeting occurs the following Monday. So, in looking out to 2035, there weren't a lot of instances. Veterans Day falls on the 11th, so it's not always a Monday, and then Memorial Day is the other Monday holiday that's probably the most likely to, to have an impact. And I believe it was Rule 21 is the adoption of ordinances, and so it was, was reworded to account for one reading rather than two. With that, it, it's certainly up for your deliberation if you, as a, as a body, want to do something different in terms of number of meetings, dates, any of those items, we can try to assist you as staff to, to word the necessary amendments. So, as far as actions, as the city clerk pointed out, we've got two actions. Item A is Resolution 23-8174, and you could approve it as drafted, you could amend it, you could postpone it, or you could vote to deny and, and leave the current practice in place. Then the second item, Item B is Ordinance 23-11186, and that, that complements the resolution. So, in the event that you didn't pass the resolution, it wouldn't be appropriate to act on, on the ordinance. They would have to work in tandem, but again, you could approve it, you could amend it, you could postpone it, or you could vote to deny. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you for pointing out the holidays, because I'd read that, and I wanted to verify that we'll always have at least two meetings a month, so that was important. So, thank you. Okay, I'll look to my left for comments.
No questions, no comments.
Just one question, as far as the rules, ordinances are the only situation in which silence by a commissioner is taken as a negative? In all the other situations, it's assumed to be a yea vote?
That's why I'm glad he's sitting there.
That's correct. That may sound rather counterintuitive, but it's, it's a function of the legal requirement for an ordinance, that there must be three affirmative votes, regardless of how many commissioners might be participating. The intent is to be sure that it is the, that an ordinance represents the majority position of all of the members-elect.
So, an ordinance, if we go to one reading, will always be done by roll call?
That's true too.
Correct.
That is correct also.
So, that, because that way, I wouldn't, I might not hurt you, but I figured that since we're doing it all in one, it would need to be a roll call.
And that's, that's the reason that, stepping back to non-ordinance, the common law tells us that if a commissioner is silent, that is attributed as being supportive of the otherwise majority position. That rule doesn't work if you're required to have three affirmative votes. You don't want to attribute a silent vote. It has to be three votes under any circumstances.
And just as a clarification, that, that is a valid point. That is articulated in Rule Number 21, but that is not a change from past practice. That's an articulation that, that's been there all along.
Okay, now, does 11186, is that specifying a certain number of meetings per month, or is that open to discussion?
The resolution's the one that specifies the, the number of meetings a month. The ordinance just addresses how many readings it takes to pass an ordinance.
Or maybe I had them reversed. So, or, so the net, some of all this is that, are we deciding to change from four meetings a month, or is that still?
That's the, that's why this, the resolution's written.
Right. If you go to the resolution, Rule Number 1, it's written, "The city commission shall hold regular meetings in Room 107 in the City-City Building on the second and fourth Mondays of each month at 4:00 PM. Special meetings shall be called," like they, that hasn't changed. "If a regular meeting date shall fall on a holiday, the meeting shall be held on the following Monday." That hasn't changed either, and a majority of the members-elect shall be acquorum. So, that second line of Rule Number 1 now inserts the second and fourth Monday as the meeting schedule.
I could certainly do stuff with the time off. I think that's a big drop, to drop our availability to the public by 50%. You know, the third Monday is, well, we know the certain holidays every year are going to be a third Monday. I'd like to try first, second, and fourth. Again, you know, I would gain a lot of time to do other things, but I'm also concerned about the length of the meeting and the fact that folks will have only two times a month to see us in public, and if the meetings go longer than this one, the citizen's comment is going to be very late. And if, if we're going to have longer meetings, I'd suggest moving citizen's comment back up to the beginning of the meeting.
I know you're looking at me, but I'll direct that to the governing.
Okay, I'm looking up and down the.
And I know we, you know, I, I understand your, your comment about citizens forum, but we have email and, and we're available 365 days a year.
Yeah, sending email, citizen assumes we got it. Coming up to this podium ensures that we get their message.
I just, yeah, I.
And, and sometimes.
Worth mentioning too, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say, sometimes folks don't really have a comment until right before the, you know, the meeting. I mean, I tell folks, you know, calling me after Sunday night doesn't help much, because my Mondays are so scripted, I don't, you know, if the city manager needs to reach me on a Monday, you know, he knows, has office, call my office to make sure I get the message. I, I just think it's nice to have availability of real, live contact with our citizens. And twice a month is a big drop overnight.
But again, I think we've looked at other communities, and, and twice a month is fairly standard, and I.
I'd say we've, we've been doing a pretty good job with four. I think we could do a good a job with three.
See, I, if I'm going to take the jump, I'd, I'd go to two, and we can always amend it back to three. And I was looking at today's, and except for the fact that we had the, the one item that had to be removed, well, was on there because of Ram contracting backing off. And I've talked to, to the city manager about this. I think like item 6.1 and 6.2 could have easily been consent agenda items today. I think like items 6.1 and 6.2 could have easily been consent agenda items today.
If it wasn't for the regulator, do you pull on that bid?
Pulling that, those two would have been easily added to, to the consent agenda, I believe. I think we're, I think we can do things to streamline the meetings and, and still be efficient.
That's true. If we're here till 9:30, we can vote to go back to three meetings.
And again, the, the, the main reason I was interested in two meetings was the fact that it gives staff more opportunity to get work done between meetings. When you're meeting every week, you're continually doing blue sheets, getting ready for the next meeting, meeting with commissioners about that meeting. It, it seems to me like we will now have time for staff to, to actually get work done instead of every, every two, every week we're giving them new assignments. That's, that's my concern and we'll hopefully that, we'll see how that works out.
I think that's been one of my concerns and I, I think there's gotta have a starting point. This is good. I, I like this as a starting point. Not gonna be here, of course, but, but you can always have another meeting or a study session if, I mean, I think we've moved some items that we, at the blue sheet level, at the, at the agenda, regular meeting level, we've had enough of it in a study session that everybody is versed in the, in the item by that time. So, I think we've moved more things to study sessions and that's been very valuable, in my opinion, to vet out the, the subject matter and then have some time to sleep on it before we actually consider it. So, if you had, in my opinion, if future, in the future, you have some difficult subjects to consider, you could put them into a study session and take them up on a special meeting.
Now, is it implied the study session would be added on the second and fourth? Or would those be separate or different days?
The intent would be study sessions in, in front of each of those meetings. If there was need for additional, we'd treat that like a special meeting and confirm with the governing body that there's consent.
This is my concern, the meeting length. We're, we're three hours, 15 minutes in tonight. If we have an agenda like this every week or every meeting and a study session on top of that, that's way too long. It, it, I'm, I'm losing focus. After three and a half hours is about my max.
Well, imagine our citizens, we're working, we're, we have something to keep us awake. Imagine someone sitting in those seats for five hours to come up and talk for two minutes.
Well, I'm not worried about that as much as, you know, I think we need to.
But they are.
Well, I think we need to streamline our meetings because if you think somebody's gonna sit there and watch our meetings for five hours, that's probably a problem, you know?
But that's when we get accused of operating in a fashion to reduce citizen involvement. We structure it so that it's disadvantageous for them to want to participate.
Well, and, and that's, I think some things haven't been addressed here that we're just jumping into it. And number one, the citizens forum, you know, I agree we should, Mr. Winholz had suggested a long, long time ago, set a time of, say, 5:30. Finish the agenda item, whatever we're on, then hit citizens forum. Proclamations take a lot of time. And I think we need to set a limit to two per meeting. When we have three and four, that's way too much. And as I visited with a peer community in October, they only have proclamations come every other year. Not, not every, not every year. And I'm not against proclamations. I love it when there's kids involved and they get to come in here and take part in government. But I think it, if we're gonna streamline the meetings, we gotta cut something out.
You know, only problem with having citizens forum at a specified time is if our meeting is short and we're out of here at 4:45, we gotta sit here and wait until 5:30. Well, we would because we've advertised that we're gonna have citizens forum at 5:30.
Yeah, and we, we discussed that previously. And I think, you know, it could be at 5:30 or at the end of the meeting, whichever comes first.
I think it's worth mentioning that we've had feedback to the effect of it would be nice to have citizens forum or even the meetings in the evening after normal work hours. So, to me, that would kind of segue into if we're two meetings per month, longer meetings, and you're probably looking at citizens forum at that seven to 7:30 range, which is feedback we've received. They would like it roughly that time. And pertaining to citizen feedback, I mean, there's so many means of, of communicating now via, you know, there's, there's, you know, Facebook, Instagram, et cetera, email. I get text messages, I get phone calls, which I happily take. But I think even if we ourselves are not partaking in that particular medium, the citizens do, and I mean, I'm not on Facebook in the sense of I don't post a lot, but the two most recent issues, for instance, the, the fees for the parade, the toy parade and the situation with Cozy N. Let me tell you, there's, there's a lot of feedback on social media. There, the citizens are communicating with us, whether we choose to see it or not. They, they have a voice. They, trust me, they have a voice. It's not one you necessarily want to repeat in polite company, honestly. But that's a whole other story.
But their voice on Facebook and the radio really doesn't accomplish anything.
I have more to add to that. So, my mother-in-law died last year and there's, there was one item on the, on the agenda that I felt was, and I think it pertained to our, our development agreement or our, our project. And I felt compelled that regardless of what was going on in my personal life, that was one item I needed to be here for. So, despite what was going on in my life, it was not a good day, I watched that meeting. And maybe not with full attention, but I, I was, is in the peripheral of my, you know, existence at that time where I said, okay, this is on the agenda and at this point, I'm leaving my home and I'm, and I'm going to attend to vote for that particular item on the agenda. It's not a bridge too far that if somebody feels overly compelled to voice their opinion at citizens forum, that they can, it's, I'm not asking, it's not asking too much. In fact, I'd argue it's more convenient for them to get on YouTube or Facebook or, or, do we do it on Instagram as well?
Facebook and YouTube.
Okay. So, those are two platforms you can get on that are universally used for the most part. And you can kind of monitor the meeting and go, okay, well, I have the agenda. I know, I know when I could probably come in versus, you know, and I respect everybody that sits in here and waits to make a comment. We appreciate it, but there are other ways to do it. There's, there's more than one way to do it. And I personally partook in that method and it worked well for me. And I was able to, to help my wife with, and I don't want to overshare. It's just, you know, it was a rough day. But there was one item of business and I, I kept an eye on that meeting and I was here for it. And if somebody has the mind to do it, they can be here for public comment.
We allow citizens to do.
Yes.
Yeah, forum through the Zoom.
So, back to the study sessions.
I, I think a 2:30 study session and a three and a half hour meeting is too much. I think if we're gonna do this, we need to move study sessions to another day or have less of them. I think we have a lot, you know, and the staff does do a good job informing the commission and the public. And, you know, it takes all summer to go through the budget. I think the mayor has the greatest impact on the scheduling of items. You have a say in what's good scheduled for the meeting. I would think that you could balance those two so that you don't have yourself a three and a half hour meeting backed up against a 2:30 study session. I'm sure the staff can figure that out to balance things out.
Commissioner Longbine does bring a point there. About two and a half, three months where we know every Monday we have a study in preparation for the budget. I actually found it helpful because we spread it out. We, you know, took each department and, and in understandable bits, you know, small bites. But that was meeting weekly. I mean, you know, you can combine two of them, but yeah, you, you, you will be sitting here for.
The resolution, this ordinance neither one addressed study sessions, so.
Yeah, I don't know that we've ever.
We never had. So, that's, that could be at our discretion as we go through this. I mean, and, and if we find out study session and meetings are running too long, we can, we can address this on the fly and go to study sessions on the off week or, or whatever, or, you know, so. Because this is, this isn't really addressing study sessions. And there are times of the year that we may, because of budget, call, you know. What type of notice do we have to give for study sessions?
We treat them like a regular meeting, so, but they're.
I mean, is it 48 hours, 60? I mean, so if on a Monday, we know we're gonna have a study session the next Monday or whatever, that's plenty of notice to give or even during the middle of the next, a Wednesday for a Monday study session would be adequate notice.
Versus practice.
As a matter of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, there is not a specific notification requisite period of time. We proved that last week with the, it's a matter of, the problem would come if you knew you were going to have one and you waited and didn't advise the media and the public and anybody who has asked for that specific notification. As soon as you know you wish to schedule one or have a need to schedule one, then certainly the obligation to notify as quickly as possible attaches. Again, last week being an example, we had an emergent situation and went as fast as we could and letting everybody know. So, that, that is compliant on a circumstance, circumstantial basis.
See, I don't, I know there was a few communities that had a study session on their off week, but there's a lot of them didn't, maybe, yeah. So, I think we can address the study sessions as we go along. So, that would be my.
That may be the reason why we do things better than they do.
We can beat stuff up better than most of them, I think, so.
So, I do think with respect to the budget, we may be getting back to you and saying, rather than trying to do it as a brief study session, can we block out an afternoon and, and cover more ground in one setting? And that might be off cycle of, you know, regular meetings.
Yeah, you could have a study session at, at four till six or whatever, which would be more, yeah. We can call that.
But it's, you know, we've.
Instead of an hour, you do two or three, yeah, so.
Staff's been doing it this way for years. It's, it's your discretion.
If we do move this direction to two meetings, when would this take effect? Because I, I really feel we got two meetings left this year that Commissioner-elect Ivy should have some input on this.
You raise a good point. That was a topic of conversation that Greg and I had and I don't know if we got it incorporated. My intent would be for it to be effective January 1.
January.
But we would need to incorporate that into the resolution.
That could certainly easily be done, whatever date.
Effective, effective January 2024.
Yeah, and again, it's your discretion. But if you set it as being effective January 1 of 2024, then the second meeting of January would be your first meeting in 2024.
Which on a practical basis won't alter anything because we're not gonna meet on the first Monday anyway.
Yeah, it syncs up with what would have been our installation meeting anyway.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of for trying it. Let's see, staff, you know, will, will know six months into it or whatever how it's working, will know if it's effective, if it's beneficial to staff, which is my whole goal is to, to help staff be more efficient.
Well, some things in it I don't like, but I don't want staff to think we're going in kicking, screaming and, and back into this. So, I will, I mean, I, I made my objections known and, and we do have the ability to change it on the fly. And maybe, maybe it's, well, I can't even, am I the second oldest, first oldest up here? I mean, six hour meeting does get to be kind of long.
So, and not, not to place blame, I guess, but just to be clear, the, the staff serves at your pleasure, always has, always will. This is not at the request of staff. This was drafted in response to your discussions.
Well, staff has went through the dinner hour here. And I, I just think these long meetings going through the dinner hours is an issue. And if we do go this direction, I think we need to set a date in the future to kind of step back and review and see how it's going.
Oh, I think we'll know three, three, three to six months into it if it's working. And I think we'll, we'll, hopefully, we're smart enough to, to massage it so we can make it work. I don't.
Do you think three months?
I'd say three, three months for an initial conversation, certainly. And I think as part of this, I was gonna bring it up in other business, but we need to really look about moving up our electronic formats. And I mean, if you double or triple this, it's gonna be an unwieldy. And I've, sometimes I review the, the packet online anyway because I'm out of town or whatever. And, you know, first two times are kind of awkward, but I've, I've learned how to do it and how to highlight stuff.
Well, and, and one way to say something is, is again, the blue sheets, I like a hard copy, but, but like this, this is the ordinance and this is dealing with the, I wanna, how many of you read the, the bonding documents?
Every page?
Yeah, but, but what I'm thinking is, you know, maybe if we get hard copies out and this could be, you know, these, the supporting documents could be online if you wanted to go and look at them because, or whatever.
We could save on the paper clips too.
I actually prefer it that way because I can, I'm getting to that point where my visual acuity close is not always the greatest. And electronically, you can always just kind of zoom in and then get a.
You need 150%.
Yeah, well, the thing is, I have corrective lenses in right now, so it's kind of a, anyway. But, but it just seems more intuitive and maybe it's a, I don't want to say generational thing, but I've, I've gotten more comfortable with, with using the electronic form and I, I do like having that ability where there are times I have to confess where I've, I've actually, the thought occurred to me to get the two fingers and to zoom it in on that side, I deal with just things electronically more than I do paper these days. And to me, that would just kind of coincide with the rest of my life, I guess.
Well, as I read through the rules here, there is a clause in there about prohibiting electronic devices and communication. And I think we've probably all violated that tonight.
Well, for, for communicating.
For communicating, yeah.
Right.
That would probably need to be amended.
Outside communication. Right, when we're on recess, we're allowed to use it.
Just kind of, this actually segues into my previous comment. I don't know if you guys know this or not, there's a, basically a, an app that will magnify things. So, if occasionally you see me over here with my phone over, I'm magnifying the, the script. So, I, I mean, I don't know. I think, kind of on the honor system unless somebody's.
I think, I think that's where Debbie's, Debbie's budget numbers, which she used to give to us on letter instead of legal.
I think you need to make an appointment with the IDOC.
Okay, again, we, we complain about our, length of our meetings and here we go. We're going down a rabbit hole, so. Okay, I guess at that point, I'll open it up for public comment. Do it while you're still the public, buddy.
I know, I'm coming as a citizen, but.
Can we have your name?
There you have you, from Kansas. My thoughts on this, I, I like the two meetings per month with the option of the study session. I was kind of thinking like on the third, on the third Monday. If it, you know, at the staff's discretion, if it's a short study session and a short meeting, by all means, put them on the same day. But if it looks like you're gonna have a meeting like tonight and you really needed a study session, let's throw that off on a, on another day. I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Longbine, long meetings. We've had some planning commission meetings that have gone a long time and, and the back starts to, you start feeling it after a while. But I'm here to serve, so I'm willing to do it. As far as the citizens forum, you know, initially, I used to say, move it up. But, you know, Commissioner Longbine made the motion tonight to move this to the end to accommodate some of the, some of the business people that were here. So, we still gotta take them into consideration. I think a way to stem that would be on Commissioner Langwitz's social media. I think a way to stem that would be on Commissioner Langwitz's social media. So the two items that you mentioned were both obvious, that there is potential of a lot of people to come here. So let's put that on the agenda beforehand so it doesn't end up on Citizens Forum. That way you could probably place it more or less where you would, you would want to in the meeting and not necessarily. And then that would leave the Citizens Forum for the stuff that's missed. I, I'm, I'm younger than Greg, but I still like to have paper. Maybe, maybe some kind of hybrid version of it, but I have paper spread all over so that I could flip back and forth and, and all that, but that's neither nor there. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your election.
Everybody thinks we spread out here because of COVID, but we all needed the extra packets to spread out.
Ben Wenholt Salina, as Mr. Langwitz says, you have a responsibility to the citizens. You're supposed to be here. You're elected to serve the people. So unless you got one foot in the casket and the other on the banana peeling, your body belongs in here. You belong to the people. You answer to the people. You need to read these facts in the Constitution. Greg knows about them.
Ben Wenholt Salina, three and a half hours, we're here, we're still here. Look who we got left. You're going to have us every down time that you have two meetings. All right. It was commented that other communities are only doing two meetings. Well, if those communities are jumping in the water, we're going to jump in at two, just because, you know, Salina is noted for being a community that cares, and with having four meetings, that basically is running the business the way it should be, instead of streamlining it and trying to shove stuff through, basically through two meetings. You two are reelected. He's elected. Y'all knew what you signed up for when you wanted to be reelected. You signed up for four meetings. You knew that. It's always been that way. It's always been four meetings. You knew what you were getting into. So in other words, what you're saying is a CEO becomes the hot dog in a company, he decides he only wants to work half a week instead of a full, so let's change the rules for this company, and I'm only going to work half a week. It doesn't work that way. Because one, you guys aren't CEOs. You are the people's servants. You are to do what we want you to do. And, you know, when you talk about social media saying that, you know, when there's an issue that you can get on social media, if you look at most of the comments that were on social media for the two, the two items that got everybody's neck, got the, their hair up on their neck, they were commenting on what other people started on their forum. They didn't, they didn't want to get a hold of you guys to tell you. They wanted to vent to everybody else, to their friends on Facebook and get on the bandwagon of exactly what was being said, good or bad. Since I've only got a minute left, I'm going to jump down to Citizens Forum. All right, so this has been my pet peeve ever since this was brought up and ever since it was changed to the end. If you're going to have two meetings, put it at 5:30 or beyond. You saw tonight exactly what happens when you take 6.6 and move it to the end. You can do the same thing with Citizens Forum. You get to the time, you look at it, you say, okay, it's six, it's 5:30, it's 5:40, let's go ahead and have Citizens Forum now. Because this way, the people that, that do get off at 5 o'clock have a chance to get here, and then they can do their talk and not have to wait until 8, 9 o'clock at night, and then basically then they can leave. Then you've got eye to eye contact with the citizens themselves. A lot of citizens will not come here because they don't know when they're going to be able to speak, if it's, it's going to be at that. And if your meetings are really short, if you only have two, then it's at the end of the meeting. And you need to put that into your, your weekly things that you have on the rules in here of Citizens Forums, how much time you got, and that it will be 5:30 or if the meeting is shorter. I mean, that's a no brainer. Instead of leaving it at the meeting at the end to where at 9 o'clock or whatever, you're basically going to finally get your say so. A lot of people are not going to show up. And if you do move it and keep it to the end, you're going to show the public, you're going to show the public that you don't care about their opinion, that you're willing to stifle them or do anything you can to keep them from coming here.
Thank you.
So if we go to two meetings a month, is that going to cut our pay in half?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of comments there that I could disagree with, but we're not going to go there, so.
Rosemary Mice, Salina, Kansas. As you all know, I come to a lot of meetings and I set clear to the end. And I'm kind of in favor of two a month, only if you would move the study session like they suggested another day unless you know it's going to be a short meeting. And of all the times I've come, going to county commissions and these commission meetings, I think there are some things that, that are on the agenda that you could put on the consent agenda that would take up a lot of less time. And as far as the Citizens Forum, I like it at the beginning of the meeting, but I'm like with Ben, if you're going to have it later in the, in the meeting, have it at 5:30, and if you're in the middle of something, finish it and have the Citizens Forum and then go on. So that way, if there are citizens here that want to speak and they don't want to sit through a bunch of other things that need to be discussed, then they can leave, but at least they've had their voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second. We moved the Citizens Forum because folks said that they couldn't get here in time. They were working at 4 o'clock. And then, you know, it's either too early for some people, too late for others. Just having run meetings, I would hate to have to be looking at that clock knowing at 5:30 I got to have things just orchestrated. And if somebody's at home watching the, the meeting and they want to come down, if you say, okay, we're going to do it in five minutes, well, they're not going to have a chance.
Well, they can, they can, yeah.
If they have that, well, if they're on it, they probably do have the capability.
And, and my deal is, when we decided to move it to the end of the meeting, Mr. Wenholt's kept a, a spreadsheet, but I kept a more detailed spreadsheet. And if you remember, we had about six people that did 90% of the talking. So if I had eight different people every week at Citizens Forum, I'd, I'd have a whole different, a whole different feeling about it.
Well, I think it's, it's-
And, and our job, and he said, we're here for the people. Yeah, we're here to do the business of the people, and that's what we're here to do. And that's, that's what these blue sheets are. That's, that's doing the business of the city. And we're open to Citizens Forum, and, and I'm not even sure it's a requirement, but I think it's an important part, and we have it. And I think it allows us to get the, the business of the city done, and then we'll hear from the citizens. That's, that's my, that's my two cents.
As long as it's not at a ridiculous hour of the night, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm still thinking going from 4 to 2 is a big jump. I, I like going from 4 to 3 better, but I, I just don't see sitting out there for five hours to, I think we just need to come up with some other solution for Citizens Forum.
But isn't it true that at the mayor's discretion and the commission's discretion, if we felt Mr. Wenholt's had something substantial to say that particular week, we could move Citizens Forum up to another place on a fly, anytime you wanted to do that?
If, if it's on an agenda item, of course, he could, he could speak eight different times during the meeting because he could speak on each agenda item. It's for those items, for most people that aren't on the agenda, otherwise they're going to speak when that item is being discussed.
I, I would like to try the two, and again, we can, in, in three months, we may, we may find out that, you know, we're getting too old to be up here that long, or we haven't managed, we haven't figured out how to, to adjust our, our agenda to, to do it, and we may have to go to three.
So it could be at time and date specific, that fourth Monday in April? And say April because January is a wash.
That's a good point.
New commission, one meeting, to give us three months to see how it's actually working. So the, that-
I don't know if we need to put that in a resol-
Right, that, that's what I was going to say, is my suggestion would be, you can instruct staff to place it on the agenda, place a discussion on the agenda back in April.
It's not part of the resolution or the ordinance.
But I don't know the, if we try to craft it into this, it gets pretty complicated.
So let's just as a group say, we'll, we'll review end of April?
I would say any one of the commissioners could bring it up under any other business at any time and see if the group is ready to consider it.
We'll forget, that's the reason I want to-
If we're here at 8 o'clock every night, we won't forget. We'll probably, we'll probably address it halfway.
Well, now, after this issue, I, I would, you know, I, I-
We might, you know, the first quarter of Monday Night Football is already in the books.
Hypothetically, if it's a complete train wreck, I mean, we're probably going to bring it up way before April. I mean, if it's just a mess, but I think the discretion of the mayor, I mean, and actually, Commissioner Longbine, to your credit, you were very intuitive about, we had an item that you felt, hey, this needed to be moved, and if traditions stands true, and in a couple months you're going to be sitting in that mayoral seat anyway, I mean, we can kind of alter the meeting accordingly and just be, just have some intuition about it and, and be cognizant of what's going on out, out there in the-
Although I suspect one thing will continue to happen, there will still be the last minute additions to the agenda, no matter how hard you plan, a lot of stuff is just last, and I say last minute, in this case, last several days stuff that forces itself onto our agendas. And you don't always have as much latitude as you would think and set an agenda.
Does somebody have a motion and we can see if it flies?
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 23-8174, mending the rules of procedure and order of business for conducting meetings of the Board of Commissioners regarding when regular meetings are held and the manner in which ordinances are adopted effective January 1 of the next calendar year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 23-8174, mending the rules of procedure and order of business for conducting meetings of the Board of Commissioners regarding when regular meetings are held and the manner in which ordinances are adopted effective January 1, 2024. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That item passes 4 to 1. That will bring us to ordinance number 23-11186.
Mayor, I move approve ordinance number 23-11186.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11186, and I'll read on first reading. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That item passes 5-0. It'll be on the, second reading will be on the agenda if we- Okay, any other business to bring before the body?
Just, well, I don't want to go out of turn, I'll wait for you to recognize me.
I'm recognizing you.
Okay, thank you. Two things. If you missed the Kansas Wesleyan Candlelight Service at Stiefel Theater last night, try to go to their website and, and watch it. It was fantastic. Second, I don't know if there's anyone here who can just give some quick explanation. There's a church in town that wants to place a second sign on their property, but I imagine, I've been told that churches, like businesses, can only have one sign on their property.
I don't know any of the specifics of what church we're talking about. I do know from a prior church request, there are size limitations, there are, they're subject to the sign code like others, so-
Can a business have only one sign, if, if it's on a corner lot, can it have only one sign?
I, I think it's more of a size limitation than a numeric limitation, but it, it would depend on some specifics that I would need to get in terms of location and take a look at the code.
I'll get more details and get with you. Okay. That's it.
Commissioner, right?
I do have one item, I think you're already aware of it, but because of illness of the, the consultant, we've had to cancel the homeless forum that we were planning to have day after tomorrow. So we're going to get the word out in the same manner that we announced it, we'll post it at the, the meeting venue, and then they're actually, have been contracted by the state of Kansas, and we're going to be kind of doing a circuit here in Kansas, so don't know the, the reschedule date just yet, we'll have to work that out.
Okay, with that, it leads us to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone?
I brought this up to you last week about the hazards we're causing to the ecosystem. You continue to bring businesses to town. That was in the paper today. We had this contamination problem out here at the airbase. Why are you still allowing this to happen? It's your grandkids, Mayor. You said you're concerned about them. Show us. We've got to stop this. This is getting, be a big problem over the whole country. There are US Supreme Court rulings that are addressing this issue. So it's going to happen here. Another one is, was discussed earlier, and I save it for later. You're conducted law enforcement, you're dumping a lot of stuff on these guys' shoulders, and you're the ones causing these problems. You're putting them in positions that they shouldn't be in. Why do you do this? Law enforcement? It's one that they don't all quit.
Yeah, I think we try to show them as much support as we can, and we appreciate them, so.
Ben Wenholt Salina, I want to comment. I hope you all know what you're doing with all the incentives that you're giving to builders as far as housing and apartments and everything else that you say you're in need of in Salina because you have all of these jobs coming. I can tell you from firsthand experience, I just purchased a new home earlier this month or last month, and have mine on the market, and is definitely, definitely not a seller's market anymore. It's a buyer's market. Houses are not moving. I realize it's a bad time of the year with the holidays and everything, but mine is in a price range that should have went, just like that, and it's not. So I'm telling you right now, you better hope you know what you're doing with all this housing going up, because if you saturate the market completely and you're caught with all these homes and none of these jobs come into town because none of these jobs are guaranteed that they've been talking about, all the companies that said they were going to do them have went automated. I've heard that, that there's a possibility at Kubota that some of the, some of the employees will be let go because of the automation coming in. Tony's is up and running, totally automated. Yeah, they're hiring employees, but they're hiring for the low end jobs, the high ends have already been taken. One Vision is on, doesn't have employees. They're on a six-month contract, contract labor. And so with that, a six-month contract labor at One Vision, you're not going to buy a home in Salina. You're going to try to rent, and good luck with that. So I'm telling you, beware with what you're doing with these incentives, that you're giving a lot of stuff away, and the market has completely changed with the interest rates, the economy, and everything else that's going on. It is not, these houses are not going like they were before, guaranteed.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that, I accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion and a second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see everyone next week.